All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the March 11th, 2025 edition of the Salinas City Council. Let's go ahead and call this one to order, and I'll turn things over to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the public and for those that are attending on Zoom, unfortunately, we do not have a translator for today's meeting. I will do my best, and I will also look to support from BHC as needed and their constituency for translation. So, thank you for your patience and your understanding on that front. So, buenas tardes. Desafortunadamente, para la junta de ahora, no tenemos interpretación simultáneamente, pero para la porción de comentario público entre yo y la asistencia de BHC, vamos a hacer lo mejor que podemos para traducir español y inglés.
All right, thank you. All right. Before we do the pledge, Zoom webinar participation is available for members of the public. The Zoom webinar ID and link are available on the posted agenda on the city website. And with that, will everyone please join me, rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Thank you. Patty, if you can call the roll, please.
Councilmember Barajas.
Here.
Councilmember Barrera.
Here.
Councilmember Diarigo.
President.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Sandoval.
Here.
Mayor Donahue.
I am here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have any new employee welcomes and introductions?
Yes, we do. I'll go ahead and start and then turn it over. I'd like to introduce Lisa Murphy, our Assistant City Manager. She's here, but she's started into her third week. And then our executive assistant, my executive assistant, Wendy Willis, who's in the audience. She comes to us with a lot of customer service background. She recently worked for Central Coast Community Energy, known as 3CE, and also has a lot of extensive experience working with the produce industry and other things like that. So, we're pleased to have her onboard. So, Lisa.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. We have a new employee in our Advanced Planning and Project Implementation Division. Yesenia Segovia is an assistant planner, and she will be supporting work on the general plan update, climate action plan, and supporting our Historic Resources Board. Yesenia worked as an outreach coordinator at the Museum for Natural History in Pacific Grove before joining the city, so we're glad to have her supporting our appy team.
Welcome.
I'm also pleased to share a promotion. So, Eric Satello was an administrative analyst in our Code Enforcement Division. He has now joined our Housing Division Finance and Compliance Lane to support the management of the $49 million grant portfolio that we're responsible for. So, we also welcome Eric upstairs to the housing team.
David?
Okay, we have one new employee with Public Works. She's a street maintenance worker. His name is David Garcia, and we look forward to having him and getting closer to a full staff out there. Thank you.
Welcome.
I don't know, police. We have a few police recruits, so I'll just mention them real quickly. Nicole Samantha Lucero, a police recruit. Gabriel Sanchez, another police recruit, and Investigate Specialist Vanessa Valle Avila. So, the department's doing great trying to get people onboard.
Great. I am told that is it. So, we will do some proclaiming. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember De La Rosa for a proclamation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. It's with great honor that we're recognizing the American Red Cross. This is your month, and this is a fantastic organization, and I'll introduce Patsy Gascay. Patsy, I have a proclamation here for you, but I'm going to read it, okay, as quickly as I can. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Salinas and renew our commitment to lend a helping hand to our residents in need. And whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering and whereas the contributions of the local Red Cross volunteers, over 133 in Monterey County give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours. And whereas last year in Monterey County, volunteers helped 64 households affected by 30 home fires by addressing their urgent needs like food, lodging, as well as providing recovery support. In addition, they installed 655 smoke alarms, collected 1,939 blood donations, provided first aid and CPR training to 1,830 residents, assisted 153 families of our armed forces, and whereas we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community. So, in behalf of our mayor, Dennis Donahue, the entire city council, the community, American Red Cross. Patsy.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. It's an honor to be here before you. It is an honor to serve our community of Monterey County. I cover Monterey, Santa Cruz, and San Benito. This will be my 36th year with the American Red Cross. I can't say enough of why I stay. It's the amazing volunteers we have, the amazing community members that support us and make our job possible. We see people on their worst day, and we make them whole again, which is really hard in the times that we're facing right now. So, please don't forget your Red Cross when you see the critical need for blood donations or to volunteer. It's not necessarily all about money, though money is good. We would also like the volunteers to step forward and also help. As you mentioned, we do install smoke alarms. We do those free of charge, one for every sleeping space, because we want to avoid those fires and fatalities in our community. So, call us, let us know where you need them, and we're there. Thank you.
Yeah, can we take a picture with Patsy?
Take a picture?
Okay, Patty, if you want to come up here. Check everywhere you want to. Everybody's.
Do we have pictures?
Congratulations. Yeah. Do we want you in the middle?
Yeah.
So, here's your question. So, again, if you want to be a volunteer, be one. She made me a volunteer, so yeah, this is here to my mind, preparation of any disaster. So, thank you, Patsy.
All right. Gail Johnson, are you here?
In San Jose.
Okay. Unfortunately, for City of Champions, she had to be on San Jose because of a personal health-related issue, so she will not be able to make it, but we want to recognize her as a champion of the city. She served nine years on the Airport Commission, but her tour duty is now done, so we'll make sure to step through her and then. Councilmember Barrera has reappointed Bob McGregor, who's been hanging around the Airport Commission, and I can give you the exact date since June 14, 2005. So, he has a little experience when he gets back on the commission.
Mayor, and we got Mr. McGregor here. Can we just allow him to share a little bit of a lot of the stuff he does? So, Mr. McGregor, thank you.
Well, thank you. I came to this city 57 years ago as Preckle Sugar Company and then got involved in aviation, and did that for about 22 years. So, I've been at the airport for a while, owned air trails, the FBO there for 11 years, and then was tandemary and adult chief pilot for 11 years, and actually did a lot of contracts flying for them, so much of it that Rick made me a 20-year employee of TNA. But so, I've enjoyed my time on the Airport Commission. I owe that airport a lot, and I really enjoy serving and helping out where I can. So, thank you very much for the reappointment. I appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
With that, we will proceed to public comment for items that are not on the agenda and pertain to the city of Salinas's subject matter jurisdiction. Comments on consideration of public reunitions and consent should be held until items are reached. We want to allow kind of the general mark, assume 30 minutes for public comments, but that'll be what we do. And I'm just guessing by the size of the audience, the two minutes, the normal two minutes should work. And with that, we're open for business.
Good afternoon, Eve. After Eve. It's 4:00. It's beautiful outside, so it still feels like afternoon, but yet it is evening, kind of. Okay. I'm here to pray. I'm here to pray. So, Mayor, city attorney, city manager, city council, city employees, my name is Kimberly Bryant, and I'm here to give you the Lord's Prayer and to bless this city, to bless each one of you, to bless everyone in the room, to bless all the people out in YouTube and Zoom land. It is the Lord's Prayer, so please pray along with me. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, and deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. The Lord bless you and keep you, each one of you. Make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give you peace. Amen. Thank you.
All right, next up.
Good afternoon. Jose Guerra, Montevia Community. Glad to see everybody. Everybody's doing really good. Want to thank Mr. Rene Mendez and Ms. Areola for having that meeting with us for our meeting greet for Montevia, which we're trying to get together still, so hopefully we'll figure that out. And hopefully, Mr. Mendez, we can come to agreement with Alcalde Elementary School District to see if they can start doing their program through the front gate and, you know, hold themselves responsible for that. We hope they can at least abide by that rule and leave the park free and that people enjoy it, other people enjoy it also. That'd be great. Also, want to invite all the Montevia residents to our meeting, which will be next Tuesday, the 18th, Tony? 18th of March, 2025. It would be at 6:30 at the, I guess they call it the, I call it the cafeteria, but they call it the multipurpose room, I believe, in Montevia. You're all welcome to come. We're going to try to finalize the date. Hopefully, we'll get some more information from Mr. Mendez this week to get our block party done, our meeting greet. So, everybody watching on TV, please come to the meeting. If you're not in our district, you're still welcome to come to our meetings. We have great meetings. We have great supporters. We have a great turnout. And I leave you with this, everybody in power, because you have power, please be respectful, treat others with respect. Because you have the power doesn't give you the right to demeanor or talk bad or talk down anybody. You are still a human being. You guys represent the city. You represent us. You will make things better for all of us, and we give you that power to do it. So, please be respectful, cordial, and be kind to each other. God bless you all. Have a great day.
Thank you. All right, next up.
Hello, everybody. How are you tonight? My name is David Masonev, and I went to the presentation last week for the Beronda Road Enhancement Project, or whatever the exact term is. There was a lady there who was a parent, and she made a really good observation, and I just wanted to present it to you. Her observation was that maybe starting the roundabouts at the school were not necessarily the best idea. Okay, you have a lot of people, a lot of kids that walk, and the traffic is already hectic. If they moved it down to Nativity Ed and did that improvement there, and then there'd be less people walking, and it would allow people who are driving to get used to it and to get more familiar with the type of roundabout system that they're going to have. And I think it would protect the children better. And then go ahead and do it. I'm not saying don't do it, but maybe there needs to be some reconsideration as to which ones, where you start. Okay? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Good afternoon. My name is Lori Gro. My husband and I own rental properties here in Salinas. The water company did not raise their rates, but they did raise their service charge on meters from $90.56 a month to $158.70 a month. The garbage company is a franchise. They get to raise their rates, increase of 7%. The sewer, Monterey One Water Company, is a franchise. They get to raise their rates, 15.88%. Meanwhile, the city wants us to join their rental registration at $170 per unit, which in the case of my five-unit complex, comes out to $850 a year. So, they can tie my hands at 1.58% about raising my rents. Well, everything around me goes up so much more. And what do I get for my $850? Just another bill to pay out of my already slim profit margin. And they have lowered our property values by so doing this. We will not be investing any more of our hard-earned dollars in Salinas. We would be better off selling everything we own that has rent control on it and investing in CDs at 4% to 5% if we can find someone to buy the properties. Less headaches that way. Plus, the bank won't call you at 6:00 AM to tell you their water heater is leaking or complain about their high rent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Amy Salmina from Coast and Valley Properties. I'm here because the rent stabilization ordinance is written as simply unworkable. While amendments were considered, there are too many regulatory traps for the unwary, making compliance nearly impossible. First, the rent caps are unsustainable. Property owners facing rising costs, property taxes, insurance, maintenance, yet the ordinance restricts increases to levels that do not align with economic realities. These caps must be adjusted to reflect the actual expenses, or we risk driving landlords out of the rental market. Secondly, utility charges must be passed directly to tenants. Property owners could not absorb another financial burden for something that tenants consume. Third, changes to resident requirements are problematic. Reducing tenancy from 12 months to 30 days discourages responsible renting and disentifies housing opportunities for those with imperfect rental housing histories. This contradicts the goal of reducing homelessness and creates uncertainty for landlords. The three-day notice to pay rent issue is particularly concerning under 1161. The Tenant Protection Act to pay rent notice is distinct from a cure notice. However, the Salinas City ordinance blurs these lines, creating legal confusion. The city overrides state law in one part. Does that mean the entire eviction process is in question? The ordinance doesn't clarify. The eviction process is another major concern. Extending notices to 14 days following by a 30-day rental or 60-day period and then prolonged court proceedings means landlords may be left without rental income for months. This is not sustainable. Owner move-ins are also a problem. Requiring a more than 50% ownership makes it nearly impossible for families inheriting property to move in. State law only requires 25%. Worse, eliminating the taking off-the-market exemption means owners are unable to update and sell their homes to first-time homebuyers. Instead, they face enormous cost, three-month relocation fees, potential evictions, and loan compliance risks. These regulations do not promote housing. They stifle it. Thank you.
Next.
Mayor Donahue, members of the council. I hate to come up here and complain, but my dad always told me, squeaky wheel gets the grease, as they say. So, anyway, I'm up here because I had a lady in the entrance to the McDougal Building at 5 East Gabland lighting a fire. She did this four days ago. She did it again two days ago. 3:30 in the morning, I have her on camera, plain as day. I know who the lady is. She's been around town for years. She walks up to people and says, can I have $5? So, you probably know who she is. I called the police. I spoke to Officer Alvarez, and she said she would look into it. I sent her pictures, and I haven't heard anything yet, but it's an ongoing issue. Last week, a man was arrested in front of Dubbers after walking across a bunch of the roofs in the 200 block of Main. He first went into my brother's building, which is above, which is a building where the halter and teaks is, went upstairs with a baseball bat or some kind of club and beat the hell out of the mechanical room. I mean, he did over $20,000 in damage. It's just ridiculous. He went down the street and messed up another lady's business on the one, on the 200 block, probably did $15,000, $20,000 worth of damage there. Fortunately, he went to jail. So, that, he's out of the picture right now. I had to write things down because I'd forget what else I wanted to tell you. There is a group of transient people now who are being housed in the Travelers Hotel. Mayor Donahue, I know you're very familiar with the Travelers. It's right there, a corner of Gabland and Monterey Street. I don't know who's funding these people. I've asked around, but nobody seems to give me any information. Bottom line, I would like to see some police presence in the downtown. We really need more police drive-bys walking, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, next up.
Okay, good afternoon. I'm Eloise Shim, and I'm on the Historic Resources Board, and I'm coming a little bit early for the ACE Festival that will be at the end of April. I'm not exactly sure what the president, who is Larry Hiraara, has planned for the external decorations of the festival, but I would request that the Public Works put on their calendar that the streets are cleaned up and presentable for the festival, and also that there would be more police presence so that the unneighborly element would not be there, so it would be more of a secure and safe environment. And also, I am planning to give a presentation at the Historic Resources Board in April, the beginning of April, about the history of Chinatown. And so, anybody who would like to know more about that, tune in. And I'll be coming again. There's one more meeting to remind you all about that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, city council. Mr. Mayor, Luis Chagoa Quijas for Building Healthy Communities, and I just wanted to come up here and just share a little reflection experience that I had last week, Thursday and Friday at the Housing California Conference in Sacramento. Got to run into some of the Salinas City team there, and I could just say, like, there was a great exchange, a great opportunity to compare notes with cities around the state of California that are experiencing what we're experiencing to certain degrees, right? And we're a very unique town because, you know, we're mostly ag, and to see how the efforts around rent stabilization was an effort to meet, you know, residents that, you know, living, existing here in an ag town where the median income is about $40,000, $50,000 a year, incomes that aren't able to meet the market, the rent market. But here was this effort by the city of Salinas to really, to do what it can within the laws, within the state laws, and to be able to share that with other cities, with other representatives from around the state. You know, there was a lot of, there was a lot of, well, just a lot of, just an expression of appreciation for what we were able to do in the previous year and what we can continue to do to help and protect residents, neighbors, tenants, that are not just subject to the, to this ordinance, but those that live in our garages, those that are living in units that don't qualify, to be able to protect them as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in public comment? All right, public comment going, going. I was gonna, I actually knew to go to Zoom. Gone for those who are here, but Zoom is not forgotten. Anyone on Zoom? Patty?
Yes, Liz Camacho, two minutes.
Good afternoon, city council, mayor, city attorney, and city manager. I wish I could have been there in person. I wanted to share some news on a community event that I'm currently organizing. It's called a Food Truck Night here in Salinas. It'll be over at the train station, 26 West Market Street, from 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM this Saturday. There'll be food trucks there. There'll be a small beer garden, live music, games, and it's a completely free, emission-free event, no charge for parking, just a great opportunity to connect residents in Salinas and have a lot of fun on that day. So, again, this is an invitation for anybody that has something.
I'm here to remind you all of the treasure we have in East Salinas, Gene Robertson Park. This baseball field is arguably the finest in Salinas, but unfortunately, it has suffered from inadequate maintenance in recent years. Our Little League community extends a heartfelt invitation to all of you to join us this season for our games and see firsthand what this park really means to our community. On a typical practice days, we probably have about 100 people out in the field. On game days, that number can surge to over 1,000. This year, we're sharing the field with National Little League while cluster park goes into renovations, which means even greater visibility and use of the facilities. Several areas of the park require urgent attention to ensure the children's safety and uphold our city's image. By investing in our parks, we're investing in our youth, their development, their health, their future. We ask for your commitment to address these maintenance issues promptly. Our children and families deserve safe, well-maintained rec spaces. Thank you all for your time and hope to see you out at the ballpark soon.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, Patty, is there anyone else?
Orlando Sornio, two minutes.
Yes, City, City Council, Mayor, City Attorney, and City Manager. I wish I could have been there in person. I wanted to share some, some news on a community event that I'm currently organizing. It's called Food Truck Night here in Salinas. It'll be over at the train station, 26 West Market Street, from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. this Saturday. There'll be food trucks there, there'll be a small beer garden, live music, games, and it's a completely free, emission-free event, no charge for parking, just a great opportunity to connect residents in Salinas and have a lot of fun on that day. So again, this is an invitation for anybody that has something, nothing planned for this weekend, St. Patrick's Day weekend, and so we hope to see you guys there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Orlando. Appreciate that. Patty, is that it?
No more on Zoom.
No more on Zoom. Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, public comment is closed, and I will ask the City Attorney to put us through the paces before we move on.
Thank you, Mayor. So, council members, with respect to the Levine Act, do any members of the council have any campaign contributions to disclose tonight related to any item on today's agenda? Councilmember Barajas?
No.
Councilmember Barrera?
No.
Councilmember De Arigo?
No.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
No.
Councilmember Salazar?
No.
Councilmember Sandoval?
No.
Mayor Donahue?
No.
Okay, thank you, Chris. All right, with that, we will proceed to the consent agenda, and items under the consent agenda may be handled in one motion unless a member of the council requests a separate vote for discussion. Members of the public may comment on the consent items collectively during their public comment. Would any council member like to separate any, any item on the agenda? That's the funny thing about being in charge. I can, you actually haven't been paying attention. Run-on sentences are allowed to continue as long as it's a sentence. There were no dangling particles, there were no semicolons, it was the same sentence. Learn the rules. All right, okay. Anyone on council? Councilmember Barajas?
ID 25-044.
That's a lot of, okay. Which one, 44?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
046.
046, all right.
046 for comment.
Okay, 46, all right. Anyone else? Okay, all right. Councilmember Barajas?
Just wanted to express my, my thanks to the, the team, the Public Works team that undertook the project. I had an opportunity to also do some outreach, door-to-door in the Las Casitas Drive neighborhood to help, just remind neighbors that their ballots were almost due. I did it right before, the week before, they were due on the second, and just got to see the project coming to fruition. If you've driven by Las Casitas Drive, sometimes cars come by, you know, just flying by, it's on my running path on a weekly basis, so I see it firsthand and look forward to seeing those, those benefits largely because there's a lot of families that live out there, and there's also the elementary school just down the, the culvert there. So just wanted to express my, my, my thanks to the Public Works team for taking on this project and looking forward to it.
Thank you, council member. All right, let's go to 46, and Councilmember Sandoval.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a staff update, share a little bit about the project and timelines.
So what the action does tonight is take the reserve account, the $8.1 million that council established in '22, and move that and appropriate it into a CIP so that we can begin a feasibility study as well as some early conceptual designs of North Gate Park to include a recreation center and other amenities. So this is really getting the project started. That will take us a few months, and then we'll move forward from there and bring an update back to council.
Thank you. And for the design, is that something that's going to be developed through community input or with existing community input?
So there's already been some significant community input around location. However, this next feasibility study and conceptual design phase will also involve community input because we want to understand from residents what it is that they'd like to see in that park to improve access to recreation opportunities, et cetera, and what they'd like to see a recreation center offer for the neighborhood.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew. Gloria?
I'm just very excited, as well as probably Councilmember Sandoval is, that this is moving forward and that the residents of, of this area, District Five, that we were, we were part of those meetings when it started, you know, when you started going out to the public. So I'm really thrilled to see this happening finally. So again, thank you to all the staff, and wow.
Move to approve?
Yeah, okay. We'll note there, there's a motion lurking, so that's good, but before we go, second, carry on, would anyone from the public care to comment on the entire consent agenda? All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. I think you can call for the question.
Just to confirm, council members, moving all consent items?
Yes.
I was moving the District Five because we pulled it, but I could amend that.
So we can take District Five individually, or we can do all consent items?
I will amend my motion to, yes, thank you, new process here. I'm in to approve the consent agenda items.
A second.
The second stand on that, the whole?
Yeah, entire consent agenda. Thank you.
All right, looks like we're ready to go.
Motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember De Arigo?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. All right. We will now proceed to a couple of consideration items. So we are going to look for our favorite city engineer. We will not point out you're the only, you're our favorite.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we will be presenting to you the findings of the sanitary sewer study. In the audience, joining me is, is our team, Andrea Ress with DTA, Carrie Wagner with Wallace Group, and of course, Selena Andrews, your Director of Finance. The sanitary sewer system, it basically encompasses an area of about 12,000 acres. We have over 280 gravity sewer mains and additional force mains and 11 lift stations, which the lift stations, for those who don't know, what they do is they take sewage flows and they pump them up, and then it becomes gravity again. In 2023, the City Council approved the sanitary sewer master plan update. That master plan update identified existing flows to be 10.46 million gallons per day. This is sewage that flows out of the city. That same master plan identified an additional 2.33 million gallons per day that will be coming from the development north of Beranda, known as the future growth area. The master plan developed a capital improvement program, and it defines specific projects. So these projects are capital improvement projects that would address maintenance, the lift stations, and future, the future growth, that the improvements that would be needed in order for the future growth to move forward. So what exactly is a ACE rate study? A rate study is a financial evaluation process by which the city establishes the amount required to fully fund a utility program. In our case, that is the Sewer Enterprise Fund. That pays for your staffing, it pays for all their equipment, their supplies, everything, including software, all the maintenance work that gets done, our consultants, our contractors. So all the repair, all the improvements, the reserves, the debt service, everything gets paid through this fund. Now, your staff, your sewer staff, is responsible primarily, their main focus is they need to prevent any discharges, sewage discharges, from entering surface waters. The team, the program, is regulated by the state. So in order to do that, they, they're constantly monitoring the system, they're constantly observing and doing maintenance work on, on the, on the various lines. So what you see here in the upper left, this photo is of, of our staff, and what they're doing right there is they're, they're cleaning out a line in order to video it. And of course, what you see on the bottom left there is a broken sewer line, which we tend to have quite a few of. In 2011 was the last time that a sewer rate study was performed. That was done when the master plan was prepared. So in 2012, the City Council approved an increase to the sewer service rate. It went from 446 per month for each residential unit to 545 per month. At that time, and based on the information that I've reviewed, the Senate, the, the master plan did not incorporate any upgrades to the system to allow for future growth. What I would suspect is, given the economy of the time, that that's probably why it didn't incorporate it. What we are looking at now is a shortfall for this fiscal year of over $400,000. So obviously, how did we get here? Since 2012, inflation based on Bay Area statistics has increased over 43%. As you see on this graph, we have held that, that sewer service rate at just over $5. So what kind of investment does this really say about what we, what we put into our city, right? How much are the ratepayers really investing in the system? We did a comparison with other local cities, and what you see here is the investment that the, Salinas ratepayers are putting into the system is less than 2 cents per mile of pipeline. This compared to other local cities who are up to even 60 cents. So these images show you some of the impacts of what this shortfall really represents. The bottom left, what you see is a sewer main that's impeded by tree roots. The other photos, this is our Lake Street Pump Station that had a major emergency work several years ago because the sewer main that discharged from it had a discharge onto the street. So we did have raw sewage on the street. That, that third photo that you have, this is at La Paz Park where we did find quite a bit of broken sewage lines. And again, this was repaired through emergency work. And then the, the fourth photo to the far right, and what I've circled here highlighted, this is again Lake Street Pump Station where we had a significant pipe completely disconnect and flood our pump station. So how did we get here? Well, from what you saw in the graph, costs have increased, so everything, materials, construction, our consultants, our staffing, everything has increased in cost. Our infrastructure is aging. The photos that you saw of the Lake Street Pump Station, Lake Street was built in the 60s. Some of that equipment in Lake Street has not been changed. It is the original equipment from the 60s. What you see here on the right, basically, this again is an image of the inside of one of our sewer lines. Fats and grease buildup in sewer lines. So staff is required to, again, to monitor what they call, they do fog inspections, which is fats, oils, and grease, and that's something that is regulated as part of the program. So how do we move forward? With the sanitary sewer master plan, we did develop a, a schedule, a tentative schedule of how we move forward with making these improvements. So this schedule shows you what we would be doing with regards to maintenance work with the lift stations and also with the, the future improvements, or the improvements for future growth. And, and so what you see here is, is what we've developed in order for that future growth, growth to move forward and in order to address some of our major deficiencies. The items that are shown here that we're currently working on for fiscal year 2425 were funded through the American Rescue Plan Act, known as ARPA. So just to put this in perspective, in August, City Council approved the tentative map for the CASP. So a number of improvements will need to be made in order to facilitate the future growth area. So part of that includes a share that needs to be paid by development in order to facilitate upsizing some of our sewer lines in order to, for us to service them. This pie chart shows you the percentage that developers would have to pay, which is 41%, and the percentage that ratepayers have to pay, which is 59%. Last year, the sewer development impact fee was updated to ensure that developers do pay their fair share of the improvements. And now Andrea Ress with DTA will provide you the findings of the rate study.
Thank you. Good afternoon or good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Happy to be here. Andrea Ress with DTA, your financial consultant for purposes of preparing the sewer rate study. So there are essentially three main items that are paid for through the sewer rates, as was described earlier. That would be the city's annual operation and maintenance costs, that would be the new capital costs, as were described previously, and then that would be debt service on your existing bonds or any future bonds that are used to pay for the sewer infrastructure. So this slide shows that first component of the annual operation and maintenance costs that were built into our model. We prepare a financial model that includes all of these factors, and then working within the parameters determined by the city staff and the financing team, we have come up with a proposed rate structure for you. So the operation and maintenance costs are currently at about 3.5 million. We're assuming a 7.5% escalator, so for the first year of the study, it's about 3.7 million. And then again, for purposes of the study, we've assumed that that escalates each year. The next item that's included in the sewer rate model would be the capital costs, as was described previously. The city and Wallace Group did a detailed evaluation of the city's current, very extensive infrastructure needs and mapped out a plan under which those infrastructure improvements would be constructed over time. This shows proposed annual costs of that sewer infrastructure, just over 5 million, up to plus 20-plus million a year. In aggregate, you can see the cumulative effect of those capital facility costs totaled just under 115 million within the 10-year study period that we looked at. Once we have the costs, we then look at who Once we have the costs, we then look at who's paying those sewer rates, and we look at what's called an equivalent dwelling unit or an EDU factor. And that's essentially based on the sewer flow of a residential unit. And then, all of the other land uses throughout the city would pay a rate based on their average flow relative to a single-family unit. So we have approximately 60,000 current EDUs in the city. And for purposes of the model, we've escalated that at 1% to reflect the growth that is anticipated to occur. And then, with those factors, the costs, the number of equivalent dwelling units, we calculate what those rates need to be in order, as was described earlier, to fully fund all of the city's costs. One of the items that's very important on, and you'll hear a little bit about this later, on your bond debt service, you need to have what's called debt service coverage, which means that there's sort of extra money available after you've paid your O and M and other required costs so that the bondholders feel secure that your rate revenue is going to be able to carry their debt service. So our model builds in debt service coverage as required by the current bond covenants. Our rate model also assumes a $2 million capital, or not a capital, operating reserve fund, which was requested by the financing team as well. And so, looking at all of those numbers, we prepared with the team two rate scenarios. And you can see, in any situation, the rates are going up significantly from the current rate of 545. We have two scenarios. One is $15 that escalates at a higher rate, so it starts lower but escalates at 4%, and then a higher rate of 1635 that escalates at a 2% rate. Both of these scenarios achieve the city's goals of fully funding the costs that have been outlined, the debt service on the existing bonds, plus new bonds that would be issued to pay for the infrastructure and build the necessary reserves. In terms of how the facilities are paid for, under both of the scenarios, you can see the total cost of the new infrastructure facilities is just under 115 million. And that's split between a proposed bond sales and pay-as-you-go, which means, exactly as it sounds, pay-as-you-go, that you're paying for capital improvements with cash on hand generated from the rates. The two scenarios are very similar in terms of the end results. One is just starts a little lower, ends a little higher, and the opposite for the other scenario. With that, I will pass the presentation over to your finance director.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, Selena Andrews. It's a pleasure to be here today. With me also is Craig Hill. He is our financial advisor with NHA, and he'll be also supporting us in helping answer any questions. So as you may recall, from the staff report last year, the sanitary sewer rating was lowered from a AA- to a BBB+. A couple of reasons are cited here. That's due to weak financial performance trends, based on weak cost recovery practices. And the system's coverage has declined before its 1.2x the rate covenant is required in the bond documents. Based on the outcome of this rate study and other factors, SMP has indicated that they will reevaluate the rating. For additional context on the rating, anything below a BBB becomes speculative, non-investment grade. For instance, if the current downgrade holds, it would increase the annual debt service by 250,000 per year for every 20 million project. So that's adding 7.5 million in interest payments over the course of 30 years. At this point, bondholders can accelerate debt obligations, and the city would have to pay back those bondholders about 11.6 million. That has not been triggered, but that is a possibility should we continue to get lowered or if the lowered rate remains. With that, Adriana Robles is gonna complete the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just here to summarize where we've been. I also want to let you know that this item was brought before the finance committee last week. The finance committee supported moving forward with the scenario of increasing the sewer rates to 1635 with a 2% escalator. So with that in mind, the key takeaways, obviously, like I said earlier, we do have aging infrastructure that does need to be repaired or replaced. The costs have significantly increased, and the rates did not. And we also need to make improvements, make upgrades to the system in order to facilitate future growth. So with that, you do have two funding scenarios that would stabilize the sewer enterprise fund. One is at 1635 at 2%, the other one is $15 at 4%. And bonding obligations do require the city to financially stabilize this fund. So how do we get out of this hole? We are planning to do extensive outreach to the property owners, to the business community, and to the general public. We've put together a tentative timeline. Last week, we presented to the finance committee. We're here presenting you the findings. On April 8th, we anticipate coming before you to request authorization to proceed with the Proposition 218 process and to set that public hearing date, which we anticipate for June 3rd. And then, the rates would be effective July 1st. So with that, we ask you to accept the findings of this rate study and to provide feedback.
Thank you for, yeah, before we go to council, Renee?
Yeah, the other things, as you notice in the staff report, two items. The finance committee also asked us to look at, how does this impact ADUs or accessory dwelling units? So that's in the staff report, in addition to looking at setting a rate payment assistance program. So those are all two things that were embedded in the recommendation from the finance committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will see if there are any questions from council. Look to my right, any questions from council? Councilmember Sandoval.
So that kind of goes back to the ADU question. And we did reach out to Monterey One Water, and basically, they consider a unit just any, any, any unit, right? It doesn't matter on the size. So that's the way it was basically done. So a lot of the CIPs, what's happening is there's also maintenance that needs to be done on the system. So it's not exclusive, it's not just, we need to upsize. There's maintenance and there's upsizing that needs to be done. So the fair share cost, basically, it distributes that between what needs to be done by the developers and what the ratepayers have to pay for. So in other words, maintenance needs to occur regardless if there's any development or not.
Maintenance, not necessarily improvements to the system in order to, is that what I'm understanding?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council members. My name is Carrie Wagner. I'm with Wallace Group and in charge of preparing the sewer master plan. The difference between the two is that, let's just say, we have a sewer main under existing conditions with just your residents, the sewer main needs to be sized as a 12-inch sewer main. It does not need to be upsized, or maybe it does need to be upsized to a 14-inch. With the development coming in, that development has to pay or triggers it to go to a larger size, maybe, let's say, 16-inch or 20-inch. So the difference is that the existing sewer customers still pay their fair share of their capacity within that sewer main, as well as the future growth pays their fair share of the capacity. If there were no deficiencies based on existing triggers, existing residential, then it would be the share of mostly borne by the development itself because they are the ones triggering the development or the improvement. So that's where there's calculations for each and every sewer main that is being triggered by a future development. Does that help?
Yes, it does, but can you simplify that for me in public? My question is just specifically is if the existing ratepayers, you know, are gonna have to cover a share of the upgrade for the new development? Or is that rolled into maintenance?
They will pay a, there's a couple of different conditions. If it's an existing sewer main that has no deficiencies under existing demand, meaning when we ran the hydraulic model, the existing customers don't trigger, there's no deficiency in the sewer system, then that represented one scenario where the future development would bear the majority of the costs of that construction. Not all the costs, but the majority of the costs.
I'm gonna let the city manager jump in.
So based on that, let's just simplify it. If the entire cost of the system costs $100, the ratepayers, the developer will pay 41% of those $100, and that's everything in aggregate, and the ratepayers pay the remaining portion. So it's being allocated. And inside of that planning process, there's all these breakdowns that's been explained. But generally, as a whole, the developers are paying 41% of the improvements that need to be done, including maintenance and everything, fully baked, and the rest is paying 61, the remaining, 59%.
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
And can you specify a little bit more about the ADU conversation? Was that only specifically to see if there's an exemption for ADU or an addition to ADU? Or what was that conversation?
So it was a variety of questions that were sent over to Monterey One Water. There is no exemption for ADUs. There is also no classification. So Monterey One Water provides us the classifications, which means the type of units that they're serving. And there is no classification for ADU. Now, I also want to tell you, we did reach out to other jurisdictions, not only our locals. And nobody seems to have a classification for ADU.
And then, my next question, there was an indication that we'd look into funds for the assistance program. And I know that Monterey One Water offers one directly. Is that correct? And do we have funds to allocate to an assistance program? Or is this kind of something we're gonna just?
So, thank you for the question, Councilmember Sandoval. So we're in the preliminary stages of doing that research, and it would be something similar like Monterey One Water. We still don't know how much we can allocate to that program, but it would be, it would have to be something.
So in short, right now, we don't have the capacity to allocate anything. Based on, if this moves forward through the 218 process, or this would initiate that process, we'll bring back how to set up those types of programs if we can. And obviously, Monterey One Water's got a program already, so that would be one to look at. But we need something that works for us, and that'll be presented to the council. But right now, we don't have the capacity to do so. As part of this rate discussion and effort, we will look to set something up.
Thank you. And then, the last time we had a discussion with Monterey One Water here about the financial assistance program, we talked about doing outreach to, you know, how we would do outreach to our community. Is that fund that they use currently, is that a proportional support to different communities? Like Salinas gets an allocation of that, of those funds? Or is that just an at-large support?
So we currently don't have all of the information. We're still in the preliminary stages. I will be meeting with them and figuring out how they run their program. You know, do they allocate a percentage to, based on the market share within the county? So all of that will be identified and brought back to this council.
So it's all part of the program. We have most, a lot of the ratepayers, so we do tap into that program quite a bit. But other members also benefit from that program. The city of Monterey, in addition to the program, provides a direct contribution for their residents, and that's single for their residents. Remember, last year, we had that conversation. We ended up not needing to do that. So Monterey does fund it, give additional money for their residents, but we're part of the overall program. But since we're the majority of the ratepayers, our ratepayers benefit from that. We'll get you that data, yeah.
Maybe that's something that we could roll into an educational piece, to educate our residents to know that they could take advantage of it. I'll reserve the rest of my things for comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, anyone else to, Councilmember Barrera?
Well, first of all, thank you, Ms. Robles, for this report. I only had to read it like three or four times, but it's a good read. You know, this is a necessary evil. I mean, we just have to do it. But my question is, we just had a lady during public comment, a homeowner, a landlord. She says, "I have to pay for this, for this, for this, for this." Your report says existing hydraulic deficiencies are the sole responsibility of city ratepayers, which is the individual. You just mentioned a little bit about that. Just share with our public, because you're talking about extensive outreach here. Share a little bit about what that responsibility entails, because all of a sudden, you know, some people aren't happy with our service. I mean, we get a lot of complaints, but all of a sudden, now we're dealing with something that's underground. Can you share with our public, who's ever listening, why is this the sole responsibility? I know I've heard about developers, but now it's coming to my house, there's another bill that I'm gonna have to pay for. $5.45 now it's going to be 15 or 16 plus.
So basically, we want to keep flushing our toilets, right? I mean, that's what it comes down to. What we, our sanitary sewer division does is they make sure that we're all able to flush our toilets. It comes down, that's the basics. It's the responsibility of the ratepayers because if we're talking the existing system, that is the system that we're all responsible for. And in order to maintain it, we have to be able to fund it.
Thank you. I noticed the finance committee and the city staff are recommending Scenario 1. I was reading Scenario 1 and 2, almost similar. Why would you say that was a unanimous decision on Scenario 1? And I'm here, I want the public to understand that.
I guess I'm gonna quote Councilmember Diarrigo on that one, where she said, at the finance committee, she said, "This is gonna hurt, but we need to just pull off that bandage." Rip the bandage off. Which is, you know, it's, like you said, it's a necessary evil. Rip the bandage off, which is, you know, it's, like you said, it's a necessary evil. We, in order to fund, you know, maintenance of our system, we just need to take care of it, and take ownership of it. You know, at this point, we've been all running around, I am a resident of Salinas, we've been all running around with blinders, pretending that because it's underground, we don't need to think about it. You know, when it starts coming out of the ground, we all definitely think about it.
And I think what I'd like to add to that is, the fundamental difference upfront from a higher increase is the capacity you have initially for debt service to do some of the improvements sooner. So, what you'll notice is that maintains the annual increase a lot less. The flip side of that is a lower, does give us some capacity, but in order to try to keep up, we're gonna be increasing at a faster pace every year. That's what's baked in, so that's fundamentally the difference. When you're talking fifteen to sixteen and change, I mean, it's still a significant, an increase based on the five dollars. And part of the challenge here is that we just didn't increase it for over ten years, even a CPI, right? So, so now we look at what makes sense to maintain our system. So, that's the fundamental difference.
Yeah, thank you. I notice we were talking about our credit rate, it went, we were, we're at a B+, we were at an A-, and I, I know in several years, how are we going to improve this? Because I know now we're talking about thousands of dollars, we need to increase our credit. Can you let the public know how we're gonna do that, please?
So, so currently, we are on negative watch by S&amp;P, and so they're watching to see what happens, what is the outcome of this sewer rate study. And they will make a determination to further downgrade us as far as getting back up, you go back out to the market, and I think this is where Craig Hill can probably assist me a little bit, but we go back, back out to the market and we get raided once again. But it, again, it's all dependent on, a lot of it is depending on what happens here. Anything else you'd like to add? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Craig Hill, NHA Advisors. Just as a quick little history, when the city borrowed the money in the last bond issue, it covenanted, and committed itself, the council did, to maintain a certain rate structure in order to pay back the bondholders. Standard and Poor's, in its surveillance that it does on an ongoing basis, recognized through the city's financials that the, just the enterprise fund, so just the sewer fund, was not sufficiently funded. In other words, the rates had not been increased per the covenant. So, that's why they made this drastic announcement. We don't normally see this where it's, you know, this many notches down. But the concern was, to the rating agencies, was that there had been no rate increase for almost fifteen years. They, the city does have the covenant to do it, and that's why we've effectively looked at, by the end of this fiscal year, trying to implement a rate that at a minimum will, you know, meet the covenant requirement to pay the debt service back. It just cohesively, looking at all of the CIP and all of the work that Wallace and staff has done around that, that was where the decision was made. Let's not only just solve this financial requirement, you know, let's get our credit score higher than what it is now to make the cost of borrowing lower, but let's also identify the, you know, find a way to pay for the CIP so that we don't have this same conversation in a year. And the idea being, what's being proposed tonight is going through a rate-setting process that will answer rate increases for the next five years. All the data you saw was a ten-year projection, which we always advised, let's make sure we're not, you know, blind to what's happening in year six. But what's being asked is to go through a public hearing process just for a five-year rate setting. The last time the rates moved was in 2012.
Yeah, well, thank you. And your report, Ms. Robles, you mentioned District Two and Three have some of the worst pipes, about a hundred years old. I'm thinking about Montevilla, Montevilla is in District Two, but it's, that's not part of this equation.
No, it is not. That is our, that is the newest pipes that we have.
I live on, yeah? I live on Fairhaven, do I have good pipes there? I don't know. But let, but let me ask you something. How do you, and this is awesome, but how do you find out what districts? Do we already know what's underground, what we need to fix? You mentioned certain areas. I guess you folks already know what we need to fix, am I right?
Yeah, that's where Wallace Group helped us with that. So, they did extensive work with surveying and with observing. We do do periodic, and we're required to do periodic video of our system, so that we know the condition of the system.
I understand in District Two, Alisada, in general, is it true we have very low water pressure? I'm telling you, my toilet takes a while to flow upstairs.
I don't know that I can answer that question.
So, we don't do water, that's the, Alco, I think is that, and maybe have water company. The other thing I think is important, two important things, is when the, when staff and Wallace Group looked at the system, they're looking at the system wide. We're not looking at boundaries by district. So, we're looking, because it's all tied together, right? So, we look at it, that's different than some other things that are above. So, that's, I think, is an important caveat. And number two, our rating issue pertains to our sewer enterprise fund. So, it doesn't, it's not impacting us in other areas, though it is assigned to the outside world how we're managing our financials. But it's really isolated just to the sewer enterprise. And then also, when we look at the improvements, we're looking at citywide, and one needs to be done, because if one fails, it's gonna impact others. So, so to me, it's like, it's not, it's not based on sort of boundaries.
Before I get the mayor too worried about my questions, I only have two more questions and I'm done. Let me ask you on the, there's been talk with some of our residents, several residents, that have come to public comment. Here we are, we're looking at future growth area, which it's exciting, but we're being criticized, you can't even take care of what we have now. And I know with this rate, somebody mentioned that we're gonna be able to pay these bills. How would you answer these folks that are saying, "We're looking into the future on building, but yet we can't take care of the six districts that we have here, which is the city of Salinas?"
I would say that our sewer crews are the unsung heroes of the city, because we have actually had very few discharges relative to the budget that we have, and to the amount of sewer system that they maintain. So, we do maintain our system, we are not able to keep up, we are not able to make replacements and improvements that are needed, because, like I did say, it is an aging infrastructure, you know, equipment that has been there since the sixties does need to get replaced. And so, it's the funding that we're missing. It's really that, in order to get us that step.
And my last question, I know you have dates on your report. When you say extensive outreach, what does that mean?
That means that what I told the city manager is that I would be going around to specifically certain groups that are very active in our community, and trying to get some sort of partnership with them to, to inform the general public. We will be doing, obviously, the notices that are required to the property owners, but we do want to do the outreach with the various community groups and different business groups.
It's gonna be a team effort. So, we're gonna go out, get the information, listen to people's concerns, use our, to sell our great Public Relations PIO team to put information out there, having meetings and so forth. So, it's gonna be, it's assured, but it's gonna be very intense, should you give us direction to move this forward.
Thank you. I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Jose?
I just have a few quick questions. In the staff report, it mentioned that there's, the rate adjustment accounts for future development, but it specifically mentions CASP. Does it also include the development proposed for the East Area specific plan?
Yes, so, it basically encompasses all proposed future development.
Okay. And does the city undergoing its rezoning this year kind of impact what that rate might be with different land uses within the existing city's footprint, not in the future growth area?
I'm not entirely sure that I understand the question.
So, the impact fee study that was done accounted for different types in development, in future development, and then allocated a wastewater impact fee to that development based on the plan provided, compiled by Wallace. So, that's already included there. The zoning is more the day-to-day implementation of the general plan of that development, but, you know, it's a specific plan, all that was kind of, and we're pivoted to place types, so the, the impact fee study accounted for that.
Okay. And then, bringing, raising the rates in either scenario kind of brings us up to, from what the numbers suggest, sixteen dollars and forty-five cents per EDU per month, and comparably to Seaside, just in general, is that kind of the amount that we need just to be operable, or are there other improvements that the city would kind of need to make and supplement to?
No, that, that amount basically takes care of the improvements, takes care of everything that was identified in that CIP program. And the CIP program included maintenance, upsizing, and it included the improvements to the lift stations as well.
Okay. Just, I know this is not our jurisdiction, but why does the City of Pacific Grove pay thirty, almost thirty-five dollars, like more than double?
I don't know that one, sorry.
Okay, I'm just curious. And then also, why, is there a historical reason why we didn't do an increase until now?
Sorry, what was your question?
Is there a historical, like, reason why we as a city didn't propose a rate increase until now? Like, is there a reason why we waited ten years?
I can tell you that since I've been at the city nine years, we have had basically five city engineers. So, part of that might be the, you know, the shifting staffing and part of the, it might have just been something that got dropped through the cracks.
Yeah, so it's hard to really respond to that, other than we're here now, and how do we move forward?
And that's all my questions.
Councilmember Salazar, thank you, Jose.
Might be here late tonight. You know, first I want to thank staff, and I want to thank DTA for their report is very insightful. Full disclaimer, I am not a sewer expert, and anyone that got into that career, I commend you and thank you for doing so. You know, some things that I'm just curious about in general, like, I'm just wondering in terms of, like, these broken lines that we heard about tonight, I'm just wondering, you know, how many do we have in the city of Salinas? I'm just wondering, do we get reports like, you know, like, once a day, we hear about them, or is it, is it weekly? I don't know how frequent or how often those are, and I don't know if the city maintains a list of, or has a list of those, those broken lines. I'm just curious to know, you know, that in the report, throughout the report, there's talk about, you know, the aging infrastructure. And so, I like the term old rusty broken pipes, right? I think that's what, what we're really talking about here tonight. So, that's one question, that's some information that I would definitely would want to know. It helps me in my deliberation in terms of how we meet this, this need in our city. Also, in the, in the report, there was, there was some conversation about the bypasses, right? You know, I'm unfamiliar with bypasses, and that too, I would also would want to know, like, how many bypasses do we have existing, and what kind of impact that has on our, on our, on our systems, right? It could be minimal, but I, you know, again, I'm not the expert, but I'm just curious to know in terms of the sewer bypasses that we have. I'm gonna jump back, back and forth, because, you know, I was writing notes, I was hearing the presentations. You know, as we talk about the rates, I think one thing that would be important is that, you know, when we go and let, you know, because I feel like it's something that we're gonna have to do, like, regardless, right? And I think it's only fair that we go back to, go back to our residents and really let them know what it's for. In the report, I did say that there was gonna be, there was some discussion regarding, like, prevention, right? When I saw the photo regarding, like, the grease, like, buildup, right? I mean, immediately, I'm thinking, okay, that's one of those prevention services that needs to be done, right? So, if we're gonna ask for a rate increase, you know, I would want to know, okay, you're gonna, right? Because I can hear the arguments already, right? If it's five dollars and change, and if that's gonna go up to fifteen or twenty dollars, you know, residents are always, are already gonna start saying, "Well, you're doubling or you're increasing by, by two-hundred percent or two-hundred-and-fifty percent." And so, I think, again, we want to be able to go back and be fair with our argument, right? One, rates weren't increased for quite some number of time, and then, two, we're trying to, like, calculate or come up with a number that is fair for, fair for all. So, in that, you know, I would also want to make sure, like, okay, you know, if we're gonna ask for this increase, right, I don't want us to say, "Part of it's for education," and then not let voters know, like, are we talking about five percent of that rate, ten percent, twenty percent of that rate? And then, how much of the rest of that is going towards, like, replacement, repairs, and then new, new installation of, of the pipes, right? So, I would really want to see how that, how that is broken down. In terms of, like, the accessory dwelling unit, right, okay, okay, this can, this kind of now begins to complicate things, right? Because I'm thinking, you know, if I'm paying a flat rate, and if that flat rate is five dollars and forty-five cents, and I have a house, right, and I have my, my two toilets, and I know that that is all going to the wastewater treatments, right? And I build an ADU in the back of my house, and that ADU has, like, one bathroom and a sink, right, and maybe additional hose. I mean, it, it's only fair that that person that's benefiting from the accessory dwelling unit, that, that rate might have to look different, because we're having an impact on the existing system, right? I mean, it's, I mean, it's great, but at the same time, it's not fair to our city, right? If, if, if we're putting that much stress, stress and pressure on our existing sewer systems, right? So, I don't know how we would calculate, like, a formula, right? Like, if, you know, if somebody has, like, a one-bedroom, one toilet, you know, that has a certain impact level on our, on our sewer system. If it's a two-bedroom, one toilet, right, it's still one, you know, one toilet, but if it's a two-bedroom, two toilet, right? And then, as we get into our three-bedroom, four-bedroom homes with two to three, you know, restrooms, and then adding an ADU on top of that, right, that, that's, that's more pressure that we're putting onto that, onto that system. So, I think, again, the rate needs to be commensurate with the house or unit, or in this case, as they describe, an EDU, because I think as I read it, it sounded like, okay, if you have a house, that's, that's an EDU. But let's say I have the same-sized lot, and I build, like, a four-bedroom apartment on that same-sized lot, am I still getting that same, that same rate? And is that, is that fair? I would just put that question on the, on the table. Again, going back to, you know, this increase and what this increase is for, I understand that there is a need to, like, replace and repair, you know, broken, broken pipes. And in the photos, because I know that there were some photos in the, in the, in the packet that we received, and as I, as I'm thinking about the future growth areas, right, and when I was reading about certain roots growing in and damaging pipes, I'm just wondering, are there certain roots that grow further down, that have a greater impact and destroy our existing pipes? Because it's something I would want to know, so that as we get these other proposals before us on the future growth areas, like, I want to know, like, okay, this tree plant that's gonna go along with these new units coming up, like, are we setting ourselves up for failure by planting the same trees that are gonna impact our pipes? So, I would, I'm just interested to know. And then, and then back to that, the fee, you know, in the, in the staff, I'm sorry, some additional research I did on my own in terms of, like, best practices. of, like, best practices, I did run across the application of resin, right, to strengthen our current system. So I would want to know, as a ratepayer, is a portion of that also going to support our existing system, right? Because as I look at the city of Salinas, like, you know, it's an old, it's an old system. Naturally, the cost to replace is very high, as opposed to repairing through that resin application process. I got a whole bunch of questions. I don't need an answer tonight. I do not need an answer tonight.
Can I ask, is that, can we boil that down to a question?
And I got two more. I got two more when you're ready. Go ahead.
Okay. Which one do you want us to start with?
If you're ready tonight, if not, feel free to come back with responses to my answers, yeah. Yeah, I don't know which one of you was taking notes.
If you can answer those, and then I can jump in.
Okay. So I apologize, we were not writing down all the questions as you were talking about them. So I'm going to try and remember which ones you answer or asked. Regarding the bypassing, first off, when it comes to your sewer collection system, yes?
Just the questions that pertain to what we're doing.
Yes, 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 yes. And then those other ones, I can receive.
Yeah. So this one actually does pertain, because it does impact your fees and your costs. Preventative maintenance is the most beneficial aspect of preventing sewer failures. That is why we've developed a capital improvement program for the city. And those capital improvement programs addresses operations and maintenance issues, as well as hydraulic deficiencies. When you have failures, either from an operations and maintenance failure, offsetting sewer mains, clogs from tree roots, et cetera, et cetera, fats, oils, and grease buildup, those things require your crews to go out there at all times of the day, all days of the week, and result in extreme emergency costs on behalf of the city. So when we are looking at a preventative maintenance program, that preventative maintenance program is significantly less expensive for the city and ultimately the ratepayers. So we are presenting to you a program that is addressing a preventative maintenance program that is hopefully a reduction in costs. The more that we can address these projects upfront, the less expensive it will be over time for your customers. The bypassing aspect of that is, when we do a project, especially under emergency situations, we still have to keep the sewer system flowing while the project is in construction. And so we have to construct bypasses around from manhole to manhole. That adds cost to the project. So if we have to do this under an emergency situation, it is far more expensive for the city and ultimately the customers. Regarding the ADUs and the inequality, Monterey One charges one residential single-family home for two as compared to another single-family home is exactly equal. It doesn't matter the size of the property, it's one EDU, and that, so, and the reason being is because they base it off of a flat rate. They do not base it off of water usage. The only way that you could equally determine what everybody's fair share would be is if they had to charge it off of what you actually use via water consumption, and predominantly that water consumption during the winter rates, when you have no outside irrigation. Unfortunately, Monterey One does not monitor it. We, Monterey One oversees several municipalities and throughout the county, and many municipalities get water service from multiple water different purveyors. So it's not feasible for them to do that at this time.
Thank you.
And just a couple other things. And we're going to make this, try to make, this is the challenge, but in the staff report, you actually have a table that allocates for the CIP existing project and future growth. So, and then there's also a table with the operating expenses and what's going to be covered in that. So there is information here that we will present and, as we're meeting with the community, probably not, like, with so many tables, but try to really be specific. But if they ask us for the detail, we'll have the detail.
Thank you.
Gloria, Margaret?
I don't have any questions, because I was part of the finance committee, so I had the whole report. Thank you again, staff. You did a wonderful job. This is questions? I'll wait for comments.
Comments come later.
I will ditto. I was on the finance committee as well, so I will save my comments till the end. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. With that, any public comments on this side? A really strict treatment on this guy.
Hi, Jose Guerra, Montevideo Community. I have a couple of questions here.
Public comment?
A comment, I'm sorry. We have all these developers coming in, and I noticed that when I saw your chart at 41%, and then it was 59% for the consumer, I don't see that's a fair percentage. The developers that come in here should be responsible for that. I mean, that's just, that's my opinion. And then, once we repair this sewage, do we redo the street? Because you already just patched it up, like we're doing now. Because I noticed on East Alice, on East Market, you guys are tearing up the road. I mean, is it going on now? Are you doing the repairs now? It looks like you're doing sewage repair already. And that's, that's what I have. And then, is there federal grants for that? I mean, is there money we're getting from the federal government that could help us do this? Because it's expensive. And then, what's your ETA, you know, on this project to be done? I mean, 10 years, five, 15, 20? I noticed that we prolong everything we build here to a long time. And then I think, instead of the roundabouts, why don't we put the money back into the sewage? I don't think we need roundabouts. People can't drive as it isn't Salinas. We need to put driver's ed back into the school system so we can teach some of these young kids how to drive. No disrespect to them, but they don't know how to drive, and a lot of people in Salinas don't know how to drive. A roundabout's going to confuse them. I say put the money back in, fix the sewers, fix the streets, and start there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'm listening to everybody, and it sounds like there is a concern about raising rates on your constituents, right? I'm kind of hearing that. My thought is, in some way, maybe reduce some of the costs that are being placed on landlords for this rent stabilization, you know, signing up for the, signing the, I'm losing my mind here. Anyway, all these fees that are coming because we're going to be registering our properties, maybe some of that money can be diverted to offsetting the charge to everyone who's going to be paying for this. I don't know. Did I make any sense? I don't know if it made any sense. But I totally agree with Jose, that, yeah, once again, it's the city needs to back up, needs to slow down. This has been a problem for quite some time, and it's kind of amazing that it's taken us so many years to realize we should have been charging more. Okay, that seems kind of obvious. But anyway, so that needs to be, needs to be dealt with. And thanks for listening to my rambling.
Hello, City Council, Mr. Mayor. Just want to recognize Adriana's message. Really appreciate that, you know, having to bring this to our attention. And just as a homeowner, I know that plumbing issues, when something breaks underneath the house, yeah, you're going to get to it. That's just, that's just the sketch to happen. You know, obviously, the reality, our financial realities, you know, it takes me to, you know, Mr. Guerra's suggestion, going out there and doing the asks, you know, filling out those grants, whatever opportunities that we can tap into, and not have to put it back on us, the consumer, ideally. I'm a big, I'm a big believer that this is going to be a team effort, but I'm also, like, concerned, you know, that this clock has been ticking, and we don't, the worst-case scenario can happen, and we're just hoping it's not going to happen on your watch. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else from the public on this issue? Eric?
Name is Eric Peterson. I agree with Shago, that it's nice to bring this up. And I agree with Adriana, that the people who go out there and work on the sewers are worth their weight in gold. That's not what you said, but that's my opinion. And as near as I can remember, this hasn't, nobody's taken this seriously for at least three decades. Maybe I'm remembering a little bit wrong. And Mary Ann might remember better than I do, the one that kind of collapsed because there was a funding issue. But it's really nice seeing this moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Hi, Mary Ann.
Good afternoon. I watched your finance meeting the other night, probably at 2:00 in the morning.
It's good TV at that time of day.
When I couldn't sleep. So I know what the problem is. But the problem I have, and some of our other people in our area, in this city, that are just one person living in that house, and a lot of them have only one bathroom, where on my street, I think there's two of us that are the only ones that live in our homes. The other ones, maybe anywhere from eight to 10, and I think the two-story, one-two-story house, probably 12, because I see them walking by all the time. You know, that's not fair to us. That is not fair that one person has to pay the same amount as someone who's using the sewer a lot more than what little old me is, and all the other little old people that are just one person that's living in our homes. That's not fair to us. We should not have to pay the same amount. I don't get an increase with my husband's pension, and I don't get it unless we get a little bit increase in our social security, but when they take it off from Medicare and whatever else that's taken out. Whatever we're supposed to do when we don't get any increase? You people, you know, if your jobs, you get raises. We don't get a raise. So what are we supposed to do? Stop going to the bathroom? Unless you want to go outside? Or go, go, stop eating? Because the food's going up, everything's going up?
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Try to figure out something for us.
Thank you. All right, anyone else from the public?
That was awesome.
Okay, public comment?
None on Zoom.
Nothing on Zoom. Okay, great. All right. We are back to council for final comments. And I will, let's see, why don't I go, I'll look to my left, let's go around. Margaret?
All right, thank you. I think you, everything's pretty much been said tonight. I think preventative maintenance is really important. I feel terrible about where, how we got into this situation, but most of in this room were probably not in control at that time. So it happened, and we have to make sure it doesn't happen again, and that we can get control of everything. I hate to pass on increases, but I think it's imperative at this time. And so I support the staff report, and thank you for all the hard work that was done.
I also want to say, I want to echo you two, on, yeah, nobody wants to, nobody wants a rate increase on any of our utilities, none of us. But it's deteriorating. You know, it's like my own home, and your home, if you have a home or wherever you live right now, you have to fix it. You have to take care of it. If not, it's going to cost you more money. And this is where we're at right now, unfortunately. And I'm very concerned about how we're going to do the outreach that you include, please, everyone in the city, churches, because they have a lot of groups, neighborhood groups, because we really have to educate our community before, you know, we make a decision on the rate increase, that we all get that information. But, yes, we need to do it. We need to move forward, unfortunately. But we've got a future growth area. We're talking about, we need housing, we need housing. Well, guess what? If we don't take care of this, will there be housing?
All right. Galileo?
Yeah, again, I just want to thank staff and our consultants for a very informative presentation, as well as the supporting documents. And I too will be supporting a rate increase. It's something that makes sense. I think if we're paying $5.45 a month, it's something that we need to take a look at and make sure that it's something that's going to be palatable for our residents. I think that they will be supportive of an increase when they know what it's actually going back to. And I concur with Mary Ann. We have to be conscious of those that, where it's like one person in a unit versus five or 10.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jose?
No, yeah, just echoing what my colleagues are saying. It's going to be a tough pill to swallow, particularly for people that lived on fixed incomes like our seniors. So, again, just looking forward to thorough outreach, and just wanted to note that, you know, I really appreciate the fiscal stability and fiscal responsibility we're taking with this, particularly as it pertains to future borrowing costs. You know, these are costs that future generations are going to have to bear. As you mentioned, just, you know, one potential loan was in the ballpark of $7.5 million over a 30-year period. Those are funds that could have gone to street repairs. Those are funds that could have gone to, you know, a community center, and so on and so forth. So just wanted to thank you guys for that. And that's all my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Brer, I?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Robles, I just want to say thank you for you acknowledging your professional staff. I always appreciate the department director that acknowledges their staff, and you do have good staff. I would like to make a recommend, motion? Is it, is it time for that?
Yep, no, this would be the time.
To approve a resolution adopting the Salinas Stormwater Master Plan update and related appendices?
Councilmember, that's the wrong item.
I'm sorry.
The sewer rate study.
Thank you. I was looking for the, thank you.
Well, stormwater is something to get excited about. I don't blame you, but let's wait till we get there.
Sure. I would like to make a motion to receive the findings of the sanitary sewer rate analysis and recommend a rate scenario for a potential increase of the sanitary sewer rate. Mr. Callahan, am I supposed to say scenario one?
Yes, please.
Yes. Do I read that as well? Or just say scenario one?
I think if you can say scenario one, councilmember, if that's part of your motion, that would be sufficient, because the report defines it.
Yes, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Tony, any additional comments, or?
No, I just appreciate, you know, this is difficult. I do like what Ms. Warden did say, and I think Mr. Mendez is already looking into those issues, because we need to make it fair. And just, Councilmember Barajas brought up a good point regarding Pacific Grove. I think Pacific Grove, I think they have something like that, and we're certain people that pay a certain rate, so we can look at that.
Yeah, that's, thank you for that. All right, Councilmember Sandoval.
Yeah, you know, listening to Ms. Bennett and Ms. Warden left already, I think that this rate structure, you know, it disproportionately hurts seniors and low-income families. I mean, their, City of Pacific Grove, I think Wallace Group also worked on their tiered rate structure, if I'm not mistaken, accounts for either the size of the house or water usage. So I think that we could do a better job to make sure we are protecting the most vulnerable. I think it's, you know, somebody who lives in a tiny bedroom could be paying the same rate as somebody who lives in a six-bedroom home. And I don't think that this rate study or addresses that. Although we heard the comments, I think by approving the way, going with scenario one, it's not going to address the concerns of residents. And if you recall, well, Tony was here, but when we were proposing the change from Monterey One Water to go to our tax bill, the most affected were our seniors. And I think that this also hurt our seniors. So I'd like to make a motion to direct the city manager and public works director to develop a tiered rate structure that either is based on water usage, or bedroom, or multifamily units, that'll, you know, better serve our seniors and disadvantaged communities.
Okay, if I understand that correctly, that's a sub- Okay, if I understand that correctly, that's a substitute motion. Is there a second for the substitute motion?
Let me ask, with that substitute motion, Mr. Callahan, would that also continue with what we're voting on with scenario one?
No, it would not, councilmember. And I have some concerns with the motion because you're asking us to prepare a tiered rate structure which hasn't been analyzed. We don't have any data or any information to do so. And so I think that puts us in a very difficult situation in terms of meeting any sort of timeline to comply with our bond obligations, as your finance director and consultant said. And so I understand the motion, I just have some concerns with it. But it certainly does not move forward what you suggested, councilmember Barrera, with your motion with respect to scenario one.
And just with that, not to be redundant, but are we going to be looking at those issues such as with the seniors?
Yes, so part of the scenario one and part of that direction from the finance committee and that you all talked about was we will look at those issues for the seniors, maybe in a, in a rate, you know, a way to provide some assistance based on some factors. So that's what we will consider looking at.
So for clarification, though, this is not, I mean, looking for assistance, which you stated would be, we don't necessarily have funding, this will not address proportional rates for seniors and people with low usage, is that correct?
Not what we have today, not the study that was done and everything that was done. We would have to reinitiate the study. We would have to relook at a whole rate, different rate model. So, and that would take, you know, a few months to get through, but that, that's what that would require.
No, you all, it's unfortunate we didn't consider that tiered rate structure because I think our seniors are going to be affected. There's a second?
Okay. All right, with no, no second, then the original motions?
But you know what, but I am concerned, I just want to make clear, I understand what Councilmember Sandoval is saying, but to his concerns, where are we at with that, Mr. Callahan? If we stay with the original motion?
So the original motion would be to advance scenario one forward, and that would be the increase from $5.45 per EDU to $16.35 per EDU with an annual escalation rate of 2%.
And that's not helping out seniors in any way?
Everyone would be treated the same, it would be the same rate per EDU.
And Mr. Mendez, to your point?
So the same rate per EDU, that does not preclude the city from setting up a rate assistance program for seniors and other vulnerable populations. So M1 Water has a rate, but they also have another program that provides assistance to people that meet the criteria to require assistance, and that would be brought to you, the council, to adopt as part of this entire mix. Right now, we don't have the city, I don't know, 5.45, we don't, there's no rate assistance. It comes through M1 Water for their rate.
Okay, all right. So I take it the original motion remains on the floor? It has been seconded. Let's go ahead and call for the question.
Councilmember Barrera? I'm sorry, councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Derigo?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Nope.
Mayor Donahue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So just for the record, this initiates the Prop. 218 process. We're going to go through that hearing process. That will come to you at some future point. So today, no rates are adjusted. We're just initiating the process. That's what you gave us direction to do.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will, we're going to talk about the Stormwater Master Plan.
Here we go.
Who am I looking for? Heidi, are you, you're up?
All right, are we ready? Okay, good evening, councilmembers, mayor, city attorney and city manager. My name is Heidi Nigemeyer, and I'm the City's Stormwater Program Manager. And tonight, we are also going to talk about a Stormwater Master Plan. And all you're asked, being asked to do this evening is to approve a resolution to adopt an update to the Stormwater Master Plan. So we're going to basically go through an overview of the city's storm drain system, the purpose of having a master plan, to propose stormwater projects, the risks and impacts if you don't address the issues, funding, and follow up with any questions. So before we start this, I just want to make one thing clear. Sanitary sewer systems and stormwater systems are very much alike. And in fact, they sit in the ground pretty much parallel with each other. And unfortunately, in this city, they're also the same age as each other. So you had a really good presentation previously that gave you an idea of what a master plan is for, what it does, and the age of our, our infrastructure here within the city and the importance of addressing that. So let's talk about our storm drain system. So basically, as I said, a storm drain system is comprised of pipes and channels that run through the city and has manholes in the street and inlets, the little curb inlets that you'll see on the, on the side of the curb, and it has outfalls that discharge to waterways. The main thing to remember about this is that sanitary sewer ends up going to a wastewater treatment facility, and virtually all of the stormwater within the city of Salinas discharges to a water body, which it discharges to your creeks and eventually ends up over at the Monterey Bay. So basically, here's a picture of someone addressing a manhole. So if you haven't seen, you know, didn't know that these are storm drain manholes, your sanitary sewer manholes are just pretty much the same. So they're pretty much carbon copies. So it basically is just an access port into the, so you can view and get access to the system itself. Here's a picture of what the storm drain inlets look like, their little curb cut inlets on, in the street. And basically, the water just discharges off of properties and runs into the street and drains away into these inlets and goes into the piping that's underneath the ground. Here's another picture of storm drain inlets, so you can see what, what they pretty much look like, so you can feel, familiarize yourself with them. And then here's a picture of our storm drain system within the city of Salinas. So this is kind of an interesting picture. I just wanted, this is the piping layout. We have over 6,000 assets in the Stormwater Program and over 145 miles of pipes, culverts, and channels. And if you'll notice, we also have an asset management program for the Stormwater Program in the city. And what we've done is gone through and what we call attributing all of our assets, which basically we've researched and found out the age, the material, the type, the size. And from that, you do some calculations and you can find out the probability of failure of your assets. So if you take a look at that picture, you'll see that Montebello is nice and green because it's new, and you can see the areas that have, that are purple that have very high probability of failure. And as I said before, all of our storm drains discharge to our local waterways, which eventually end up at the bay, and all of our waterways are already impaired. So now I'm going to have Valerie Huff from the Wallace Group explain, further explain what the purpose of the Stormwater Master Plan is.
Thank you, Heidi, and thank you, councilmembers and Mayor Donahue. Happy to be here tonight. I also just wanted to add that I was born and raised in Salinas, so not currently a resident, but I really always enjoy being able to come back and contribute to the community here. So thank you for having me. Talking about the purpose of the Stormwater Master Plan, I think you all recently heard about the storm, the, excuse me, the sewer master plan, so you're familiar with the concept of identifying needed projects and then being able to plan for them into the future. The two main purposes of the Stormwater Master Plan were first to really confirm the location and condition of your existing storm drains, and then to identify and prioritize the projects that are needed to keep the storm drain system in good working order. One of our major efforts in understanding your existing storm drain system was doing field surveys. So we had staff out in your streets, opening up manholes and taking measurements of your existing storm drain system. And this was to confirm location and also elevation, and I'll talk in a little bit about why that's important. And we were also documenting the condition of the system at that time and confirming all of the mapping. Your city has put a lot of effort into mapping your storm drain system. So we were confirming those locations to understand how your system operates currently. We also spent a lot of time talking with city staff that are responsible for operations and maintenance. So these are the people on the ground that have seen flooding issues within the city and know where there are existing concerns. And so we spent much time with them documenting where there are known issues in the city related to flooding. And we also took time to do field reviews with your operations and maintenance staff so that those of us back in the office could take some of that information back into our Stormwater Master Plan. And this is just another example of us documenting what's in the ground or, in this case, discharging to the creeks. So this is a storm drain outfall, and you have many of these in excess of 70 throughout your city, outfalls that discharge to creeks and waterways. And so we, we located those and now understand the condition of those as well. We then took all this information of your existing system, where the pipes are located, their size and their elevation, and we developed a comprehensive stormwater model. And the purpose of that stormwater model is two things. First, it's understanding hydrology, and that's rainfall. So we modeled the rainfall coming down onto the ground, and then the model tells us how much of that rainfall then turns into runoff, how much of that flows through your streets. The model then takes that rainfall and runoff and then routes it into the pipe network that we modeled below ground. And what you're seeing on the left-hand side of your screen is a cutaway view of one of the pipes that we modeled within your city. And this is where elevations become really important because we need to know how deep they are and how steep those pipes are, because those things really tell us how much water they can hold. And so what you're seeing is a snapshot of how full a pipe may be during the peak of a storm event. We did model most of the storm drains within your system. So as Heidi described, you have over 450 miles of storm drains. I'll say we modeled most of those, and we were looking at pipes that were 24 inches and larger. Using all of that information from the model, we then identified where the storm drains are not large enough to convey runoff. It's also important to understand that, that pipes are just one part of your storm drain network. So during larger storms, it is expected that you would have some water flowing in your streets. During your really large storms, your streets also function as, as a part of your conveyance. They help take that water and then direct it to your pipes. But for most of the storms that we see in a typical rain year, you would want your pipes to, to be able to handle all of that runoff. So we identified where those pipes were not large enough, and then we ranked all of those locations of potential flooding with a number of, of different considerations. So we looked at flooding frequency, and that means how often would a specific location flood? Would it flood every year with every, you know, with a small amount of rain? Or would it take a larger storm for that location to flood? And then we looked at flooding severity, and that's really how widespread the flooding is. Are we, are we impacting one city block or are we impacting an entire neighborhood, multiple city blocks? We also looked at climate resiliency in the case that we see continued increase in rainfall intensity and rainfall depths over time. Would these locations, this flooding be worsened if, if we see those climate impacts? And then primarily, we were looking at public safety. So where does flooding cause issues for the public? For example, would flooding occur in front of a critical facility such as a hospital or your police station or a school or another location that's important to access even when it's raining? We looked at where flooding could potentially impact high-volume traffic roads and also critical evacuation routes. So if there was an emergency and people needed to evacuate, we don't want those roadways to be flooded. So all those public safety considerations were also taken into account when we were ranking these projects in the Stormwater Master Plan. And now I'm going to spend just a little bit of time providing really just a broad-brush overview of the projects that we identified. And through the ranking process, we identified projects as either high priority, medium priority, low priority, or what we consider to be maintenance. And the high priority projects are those that really rose to the top of locations that we need to address right away. We identified 18 high priority projects, and what you're seeing up on the screen now is what we call a project cut sheet. So this cut sheet is intended to serve as your project summary at a glance, and it provides the background information in terms of why this project is needed, what the project includes, where that project is located in your city, and what the estimated construction cost for that project is. Of these 18 projects, the majority of them are known flooding issues that we identified along with your operations and maintenance staff. So these are locations that routinely need to be addressed during storm events throughout your city. And many of them are upsizing existing storm drain inlets. So some of those pictures that Heidi was showing earlier are inlets in your city that don't meet current practice for the size of storm drain inlets. And if your inlet isn't large enough, even if your pipe is, you're not getting that water below ground. So many of these projects are upsizing the inlets to bring them to current standards. Some of them are also addressing sediment that has accumulated over time, either in channels or in basins, and now you're losing capacity in those facilities by not removing that sediment. And then a handful of them are also further studies. So the master plan identified some strategic locations, primarily along the city limits, where the city takes on runoff and sediment from the adjacent agricultural operations. And so the Stormwater Master Plan identified locations where we recommend pursuing basins, new stormwater basins to hold that water and sediment through a public-private partnership in order to reduce the volume of water that's actually flowing onto the city streets. So these are studies that, that really warrant more evaluation than what was just done in the master plan. We identified locations, and then these studies will go into more detail of who the stakeholders are and, and what those projects might cost. So through those studies, we, we may, or whoever completes the study may identify additional projects that would be added into the capital improvement program. And the total sum of these 18 high priority projects is just over $12 million. We also identified quite a few medium and high priority projects, and most of these projects are pipeline upgrades, meaning that your pipes need to be larger in order to convey the runoff from storms. And, and the pipeline projects are typically more expensive because this is where you have more impact within your right-of-way trenching and, and placing new pipes. For the medium priority projects, we identified 22 projects with a cost of over $200 million. For the high, or excuse me, for the low priority projects, we identified 23 projects with a cost of over $100 million. I did describe there were maintenance projects, and the intention with the maintenance projects is that these are pipes that would be upsized, meaning getting bigger, when they're slated for maintenance due to, due to the actual condition of the pipe itself. So they are the lowest priority for replacement if and when that pipe was near its end of useful life. That's when you would replace it with a larger diameter pipe. So the Stormwater Master Plan identified a lot of projects with potentially a lot of funding required. And I just wanted to highlight why it's really important to pay attention to the storm drain system. You know, oftentimes, it's out of sight, out of mind, and with our climate, we don't get rain every day, so months go by and we're not thinking about it, and then flooding can occur. So some of the risks and, and impacts we'll, we'll talk through today, and these are primarily photos that I'm showing from the 2023 storms in, in January and March. This particular photo we're looking at was some, some street flooding that was, that occurred within the city. One of the primary risks, again, is the health and safety, both of your city staff and just of the general public. So when, when flooding occurs in the city streets, if it's due to a clogged inlet or something that needs to be addressed, now this is your operations and maintenance staff that now have to go into this flooded area. And flooding is not stormwater, excuse me, not wastewater, right? It's not sewage. It's not sewage, but floodwater is typically contaminated. It picks up contaminants from the streets as it's flowing across your city streets, and it's not clean water. It's not water you would necessarily want to have contact with, and this is what the city staff are working in when you have failing facilities within your city. Also, health and safety is the access for your first responders. So flooding in streets can prevent first responders from getting to your residents. And on the left-hand side was a flooded street on the outskirts of the city. On the right-hand side is a more dramatic version. There was an airlift required in 2023 just outside of Greenfield because there was flooded roadways, and the first responders could not get to that residence. Property damage can also occur with flooding, and that could be either within the right-of-way or beyond the right-of-way if flooding is excessive. So this is some flooding that occurred. The right-hand picture is right at the Montebella area, and over on the left-hand side of that photo is the Montebella Basin. And this type of flooding within the right-of-way can cause property damage. It can also lead to pavement damage. So having water sitting on your city streets can shorten the lifespan of asphalt, and it can significantly increase your capital costs for paving because your asphalt has to be replaced more often. So these were a couple examples of streets that I observed during our field review with city staff where they had noted these locations frequently flooded, and now we're seeing that the pavement is in pretty poor condition, likely as a result of that flooding. So addressing your storm drain system can also help reduce the need to replace your paving as well. And then more dramatic pavement damage. This is a sinkhole that occurred in Ventura in 2023 as a result of a flooding, and the good news is that there was nobody in this vehicle at the time that the pavement collapsed. This collapse occurred because of a failed storm drain, and this can happen really in two ways. First, the pipe itself is so old that the pipe fails, and now the street above it collapses with the pipe. The second thing that can happen is if the pipe is leaking underground, now you have that water flowing underground, and it can wash away the soil below the pavement. And so this is happening out of sight, out of mind when you have an older storm drain system, and then that eventually washes away enough of that material that the pavement collapses on top of it. So this is kind of the more extreme example of what can happen in the right-of-way when your storm drain starts to deteriorate. And then lastly, I just want to make it clear that ongoing maintenance is just as important as upgrading your system. So as Heidi described, the storm drain is taking all the material that's in the right-of-way and flowing to the creeks, and oftentimes, that includes garbage and other debris that's in the street. And leaves, trash, all those things can clog the storm drain system, and so the storm drain needs to be routinely maintained throughout the rain season because even if your pipe is large enough to handle all that runoff, if it's full of trash or debris, then it's not going to be able to convey that water, and that can also result in flooding. And now I'm going to pass it back over to Heidi, who's going to talk for a few minutes about funding.
Okay, so now the fun part. So we've gone through what a stormwater master plan is and what your stormwater system looks like, and the age of the stormwater system that we have in the city. And what we've done is through the stormwater master plan update, we've come up with a list of CIP projects that are recommended according to high, medium, and low priority. But now we have to think about how are we going to fund this? So keep in mind, with the Sanitary Sewer Master Plan and their projects, you have a rate payer that pays into an enterprise fund, and the enterprise fund is what's used for emergency projects or maintenance or repair, replacement. The stormwater system doesn't have anything like this. There is no rate payer system for the stormwater system. And so funding is mainly funded by the general fund. And so please keep this in mind because if we do have an emergency, much like just a small sinkhole or something like this, that's going to cost probably, who knows, $500,000 to $1 million to repair, replace, and that comes straight out of the general fund, which takes away from what? Our libraries and community services and our police. So funding is a serious issue. So if we continue business as usual, which means we do minimal proactive repairs and proactive maintenance, which our stormwater team, who's also our sanitary sewer team, so they're an incredible group of folks, the cost would be about $101 million over 20 years with no funding gap. That basically says we're really not doing much except for maybe $1 or $2 million a year with the stormwater system repair, replacement. After 20 years, over a third of the city's assets will be at very high risk of failure. That's 50 miles of storm drainage lines that are at very high probability of failure. What are, we did an asset management improvement plan, and what came out of that was is that if we proposed a moderate service amount and we, service rate, and we proactively replaced our riskiest assets and increased the maintenance and repairs of others, the cost would be $237 million over 20 years, which would require additional revenue of $6.5 million a year. If we did this, then after 20 years, there would be no city assets that would be at very high risk of failure. Keep in mind, one benefit that can happen, even though we don't have the money for it for the stormwater system, is that we've now identified the areas where we have sanitary sewer issues that need to be addressed. We can also take that and take the GIS layer of what I showed you earlier that showed you the condition of our storm drain system, and we can take those and overlap them with each other, and we can find out areas that we can address where we can address both of them at one time if we had the money. If we're going to tear up the road, then we might as well address both the stormwater system and the sanitary sewer system at the same time if they're both in areas of very high probability of failure. So the stormwater program has done a lot of work in trying to find funding. We did introduce a community-based public-private partnership concept back in 2021. It's a really great opportunity. We did have some leadership change that decided that they wanted to walk back from that, that they had other priorities. And so also, we didn't have a stormwater utility to help fund the projects that we could have kicked off with the community-based public-private partnership. We submitted an urban greening grant in 2022. This was the Cluster Park Green Streets Project. It's a really great multi-benefit project that also addresses traffic issues at the same time, and the urban greening folks didn't want a multi-benefit project. They decided that there was just not enough green, which I couldn't believe. Then we also submitted an application to the NOAA Climate Resiliency Challenge, and we got some really good feedback on that, and they really liked our project ideas, but they determined that we were not coastal enough for coastal resiliency grants. We have gone and talked to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, and they have what are called principal forgiveness loans, which basically are grants. And what we were looking for is adding $5 million to add green infrastructure into the Williams Corridor concept. But when we looked at it, you have to utilize that money that you get in a certain timeframe, and the timeframe did not coincide with the construction of the Williams Road project. So that didn't quite work out, but we'd still like to see more greening in the Williams Corridor project. And then lastly, we looked at FEMA, and we started talking about what we could probably talk to FEMA about, but the problem was is we haven't had a lot of disaster insurance claims in the city, so it's not really applicable. So in conclusion, we believe in the stormwater program, we believe that data is power. So we have attributed and modeled our stormwater system so we know the condition of all of the pipes, the outfalls, the lift stations, the pumps, you name it. We know the condition of the stormwater system in the city. We are focusing on multi-benefit project concepts in the disadvantaged community areas first. We are educating and engaging city leadership and the peers on the value of better managed stormwater. And we're trying to research and understand more funding opportunities and the challenges. As you know, recently, Prop 4 passed in the state of California, and it did have some money set aside to address water programs. If that doesn't get usurped into the wildfire program, then there will be money that we are starting to look at applying for under Prop 4. And eventually, someday, we are eventually going to have to work towards a stormwater utility because we do not have a fee, we have no funding source to fund anything that's happening with the stormwater program. The maintenance, much less, proactively trying to repair and replace and upgrade the condition of the stormwater program, stormwater system. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you. All right, we will ask for questions from council, questions. Comments can come later, but any questions from council on this? Margaret?
But General, I'm curious, with the age of our system, how would you rate us overall as far as the condition of our entire system? Is it really poor, fair compared to other systems?
Well, what I would have to do, I don't know.
Just kind of your opinion, I guess, just curious.
We have a large portion of our city that has a very, very old infrastructure. So I would say we're two-thirds high to very high priority probability of failure, and then the rest of it, the third, would be moderate to low.
Okay. And then my other question is, you mentioned that the sewer and the stormwater work together. It's the same crew that works on both of those? So is that the like seven or eight-person crew that goes around and does all the streets? They do everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Believe it or not, yes.
Obviously, that's an issue, so thank you.
They're incredible.
Gloria?
Yeah. Mine is more on, you mentioned that we would work, I mean, you're going to try to, we're going to try to get funding grants and everything, okay, everything we can, we're going to try to get to fund this. But the last thing was, if we were looking at implementing a fee, what are you looking at? Are we looking at two years, four years to implement a fee?
So first of all, that's not my call. That would be up to the city manager, and that would be up to all of you if you want to go down that path. We did do a lot of investigation into a stormwater utility feasibility study several, several years ago. It operated off the same concept of the EDU concept, but that kind of stopped. And so we are somewhere down that path already in doing the research, but it would be up to somebody else to make the call on if we want to move forward in looking more at that.
Okay, thank you.
Really? Any questions?
I'm still trying to conceptualize how this is going to be structured, so I don't know if it's structured kind of like an infrastructure fee. I think there would probably be some understanding behind that.
Actually, how that works, I don't mean to digress, but I'm just giving you some information from the past, and this is probably, keep in mind, you're only asked to adopt the stormwater master plan update. But how that really works is you evaluate the impervious surface on a parcel, and that's how the fee is usually structured. So the more concrete you have on your house, the more concrete you have on your lawn or your backyard, you would have a higher rate than someone who actually has allowed their lawn to sustain.
Just one more question. So when residents do see, like, you know, the floods, and we're kind of going a little bit through that season right now, when we do see those floods, are those usually the ones that are, it's those smaller storm drain inlets? Is that where we're usually seeing those?
Yeah, it can be due to the smaller storm drain inlets. It can also really be due to the impacted infrastructure from the agricultural sediment that flows from a storm.
Okay, thank you.
All right. My right, Councilmember Brahaus.
You mentioned exploring the possibility of pursuing a utility for stormwater management. Are there any other alternatives that, you know, off the top of your mind for long-term management? This is kind of...
Nope. It's not unfortunate. This is just the reality of the matter. A lot of cities and counties are working towards moving down this direction, and so that's really the only way to fund it other than the general fund. We have been working on grants. We've been exhausting all the possibilities that we have, and we haven't been successful yet. But that doesn't mean we won't. We're still trying, and we are trying to seek out all types of financial support that we can. But if you want to make this a sustainable system, you have to have it operate very much like an enterprise fund, like the sanitary sewer system.
Thank you. Some more questions. Tony?
Heidi, and this is big money. On the 63 projects, you're saying there's a rain, this is your report, from $1 million to $29 million depending, but then there's 27 projects that are identified as necessary to address hydraulic deficiencies. Is that the right word, deficiencies? But what, worst-case scenario, I mean, we just had some rain, and you know, we get a little bit nervous when there's heavy rain. How are we doing on our maintenance? You know, when the water just stays there, we find out that our roads are going to get damaged. How would you say we're doing as far as maintenance?
So we do do some maintenance of where we go around and clean out the catch basins before rainy season, and we do reactive maintenance as it comes about. Or we do inspections on our outfalls, and then we note whether we need any kind of maintenance on those outfalls. But as far as the water sitting in the streets, that's where it's going to sit.
Yeah. You know, there's a picture in the report, it's right on the corner across the street from Montevilla on Williams and Freedom. That one always gets, what is the story there as far as, is this one of the priorities in that area? Or do you know what, which are our priorities?
Does that come out to be a priority?
I don't, I'm not... Here comes Mr. Jacobs, serious.
Oh.
Yeah, I believe you're talking about Freedom and...
Williams.
Yeah. And there's a channel there that is draining basically the county property down through the city, and it's a problem at that intersection. Yeah, we try to maintain that. We do send the crews out there, dig out the silt to make sure that we have some kind of adequacy, but if it's a large storm, it will definitely overflow. Again, it's part of our ongoing maintenance. We don't have any capital improvement projects to improve our storm drain system because, again, we don't have a funding source for it.
Yeah. And I know, Mr. Mendez, that this report is just to make a motion to approve a resolution here, but the, as I hear Ms. Heidi talk about, and I hope this is appropriate questioning here, the stormwater utility, are we looking at something where, or is that an appropriate question? I see that Mr. Kelly had kind of, because you know what, it goes hand in hand with approving this, but at the same time, are we doing something? Because this is pretty serious. There's 27 priority or high priority. So where are we at with trying to take care of these issues?
So my recommendation, council member, would be that we stay focused on the topic of the stormwater master plan. I think that we've heard the questions and the comments about the fee, and we can always provide some additional information back to the council. provide some additional information back to the council at some later time.
I appreciate that, I knew you were gonna, but thank you. I just got one more question, Mr. Mayor, before you get that pencil. You know, one of the, on this master plan, I know I want to talk a little bit of the maintenance, but we're getting ready to start something with the street sweeping to really maintain our curbsides, because I know that there's curbs that haven't been cleaned in, I'm gonna say years, you know, because there's just so many cars. So would you say we're on it to be able to take care, do a good maintenance job in the city with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor? I'm done.
I'm a Barra.
Anxious on this thing.
Okay. Andrew?
The stormwater drains, like, on private property, whose responsibility is it to maintain those? Let's see, the big commercial centers.
So it's, actually, sometimes if the drain is on the industrial facility, then they will, they will maintain their drainage, but when it goes to a street or a right-of-way, then the city, it maintains the drain.
So like, for example, the Westridge Shopping Center behind Walmart or Costco, all there's storm drains back there, who's responsible to maintain those, or who enforces that?
They are. It's commercial property.
Okay, so what happens if they're plugged? Does, do people reach out to them, or is that something we pass through to the city?
Well, I'm sure we'd hear about it in a Q alert, and we would decide how that would be addressed at that time. Because the city, we, like we said, we have an incredible staff, and if they can ever help out in any way, they often do.
Thank you. And then, did we ever revisit, I know Councilmember McShade mentioned a stormwater, adopt a storm drain, did we ever follow up with that, or?
We haven't done that yet. We have, we have talked to the community about, you know, working on sweeping the I don't know if we really want to get community members to lift storm drain grates.
We don't talk about just the surface, I think that was his concept, but.
Yeah, they, we have been outreach into the community to try and sweep the curbs in front of their houses, and they've been really proactive about it.
All right, thank you.
All right, why don't we go out to the public for any comments?
Thank you, good afternoon, Jose Garimontevia community. The pictures you showed are in our community, and I think the biggest problem we have there is that the ranch, Ben Guard Ranch on the corner there, between him, the city and the county, no one held each other accountable for cleaning that out. That thing is never cleaned unless we call, we do a City Connect app thing to have them clean it before it rains, or else they don't do it. As well as the grass that they don't cut on that site, all the way down. All that overgrown brush that they do, it's the same thing. No one's holding, holding Mr. Ben Guard accountable for any of that. And then, my other thing is, the surveys that you're doing, according to the EPA, how are you regulating them? Because there's certain filters you gotta replace in those units to clean the water going to the ocean or to the creeks. There's no filters there?
The asphalt, directed to me.
Okay, sorry. And then also, I've been there since 2005 in Montevilla, bought my house in 2004, got in 2005. I know we had flooding the first five to seven years there, really bad, and it all goes back to, to the developers. I mean, whoever's in charge of these projects for the city, the developer's not putting the money to build that storm drain the right way. You guys just did the one for the Melaruce in Montevilla, the last phase of Montevilla, which is off of Skonberg Avenue, and they have those put in now, now they put them in. But they're charging every individual resident there an additional fee per year, a tax, as you say, or whatever you want to call it, a revenue to maintain that. The thing is, I haven't seen nobody out there clean them. I clean my own. In my neighborhood, whatever's by my house, I clean them. I sweep them up. It's not that hard, guys. Get a broom, sweep up the leaves, the dirt, you know, be proactive, you know, make your community beautiful. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
All right, anyone else? Anybody on Zoom?
None on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay. All right, back to, back to council for comments. I'll look left again, Margaret?
I have no comments, it's just another difficult situation we find ourselves in, so hopefully we can come up with a viable option going forward. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Gloria?
You're absolutely right. Another, another difficult situation and deterioration and, wow. But I hope, and I know that your trying, staff and all of you are going to try to find the monies as much as possible, so it doesn't impact our community. Wow, those are my comments.
We got it.
I have no final comments.
Andrew?
Well, thank you, Heidi, I see that you've tried so many different things, you know, generate revenue or seek, you know, different options, so thank you for that. It's, we're in an unfortunate situation, but I'm confident you're constantly working to find some solutions, thank you.
Yes, Heidi, I appreciate your passion for, and it looks like you love this kind of work. No, I want to, I want to thank you for, I know I've, every time I have questions about this, I go to you and ask you questions about it, so thank you for your work, and again, thank you for acknowledging the work of the people that are doing this. And Mr. Mendez, to this point, you and I have talked about this, I guess when we're doing all this underground work, I think it's important, when they do finish the good work, that they pave the street the way it was, you know, because it gets kind of bad, and if there's sidewalks, sometimes they don't re-stripe the sidewalks, and you see it throughout the city. So that's concerning, but, and then again, I'm sure you're, knowing the way I know you, I'm sure you're already looking at a stormwater utility, how to work that, so I want to make a motion to approve a resolution adopting Salinas Stormwater Master Plan Update and related appendices.
Second?
Did I get the right report this time?
You did, you did. We appreciate your enthusiasm for this topic. All right, so we have a first and a second, any additional comments, Jose?
Just wanted to thank staff and the consulting team for all their hard work. I can imagine that it took a lot of, lot of days, a lot of time being out in the field and sitting behind the computer, doing the calculations, running the reports, and generating this lovely 300-page-plus document and Excel spreadsheets and all that. So I wanted to thank you guys for your work on that. A little bit concerned about, you know, what the future holds ahead for our residents, right, with increased costs, both in terms of rents, in terms of insurance, in terms of everyday table items. This is another cost that's gonna be eventually potentially passed to our residents, so to the extent possible, always making sure that we vouch and seek the best opportunity for our residents to both benefit from this, but also bear the least amount of burden possible with so many other costs that they're already facing. And with that, those are the.
Okay. Okay, we have a first and a second, just, just, just a couple of comments. I, I've leaned over a couple of times, as you may notice, I have gray hair, which means I can think back more than a couple of decades, and the reality is, one of the problems we have with this particular issue is this, this is a result of unfunded mandates from both the state and the feds, which was, just as we have issues of our era in the 90s, I can remember back to a couple of council members who served at that time, and this drove them nuts, and that's an understatement, that, you know, here you do this, you figure out how to pay for it, and, you know, and, and certainly very impressed with all the work staff has done. Boiling all this down to, you know, getting as condensed as it is, this is tough stuff. But, you know, Heidi, the fact she is exhausting every funding opportunity, it's worth noting, but it is also worth noting, this has been going on for decades. This is an unfunded mandate. The previous conversation we had, at least this city can make a determination what it wants to do. But I, but I think what unfortunately, when I, the first time I was the mayor, the Public Works Director said, Dennis, the city's over, is over 100 years old, and guess what, there's an underground, and we're not exactly sure everything that's underneath there. So we have, as some of you may recall, we celebrated 150th birthday celebration, so we've got an aging infrastructure, some of which, you know, and I don't mean to be glib about it, hey, we gave the residents a bargain for a decade, but now we gotta pay that bill. But this one, and I mean, I was figuring out the math, there's never been a general fund allocation per se to deal with this. So it's, so we're gonna have to prepare the community for, these infrastructure conversations are not gonna go away, there's going to be more, and we don't necessarily always control the destiny on behalf of our residents, because there are other taxing entities that we participate in, some we may be able to control because we have a supermajority, that, that type of thing, but other, other things, not always. So the, the woman who came in and talked about owning property, and I get hit with this, 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 and this, we can't control all of the this, this, and thises, but we do need to prepare the community, and, and, you know, and I'm sure the result, and residents are not necessarily gonna say, hey, thanks for telling us. It's gonna be, what's the plan? But I think what we're trying to do is assess on an aggregate basis all of the things we're gonna have to think about, because you can imagine, if we have to educate the community time after time after time, that's probably not gonna work. So, so we really need to get a handle on what, what's in front of us, to have a good conversation with, with, with the community. But, but this particular instance, updating the plan, okay, this is the plan, but we've never been able to play for the plan. And so, so it's just important to recognize this, the origins of this, and, and the other thing I would, I would just, just throw in, and we're gonna have an opportunity to visit with the folks from the state later this week, it's possible the state is thinking a lot about Southern California when it comes to infrastructure and resources. It's possible Washington is not thinking a lot about California. And everything, I, if I read the tea leaves, it's all a jump ball, and typically, infrastructure is a government-team sport, the state, and the feds, county, and local. We're not sure who's on the team right now. So, so again, this issue of, this is probably the most serious thing as a council we've, we've got, got to address on behalf of the community. So, so these reports are great, because they, they begin, you're dropping some pretty interesting breadcrumbs, but there's gonna be more to follow. So, so I appreciate the work everybody's, everybody's done, and Heidi, I think your work's particularly important, because we do have to realize how, how we did get into some of these situations, and this one's an unfunded mandate. But the community expects us to figure it out, so we'll, we'll get to work on that. So, but thank you for the report. We have a motion and a second, and I think we're ready to call for the question.
Councilmember Barrahouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember DeRigo?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. With that, last time, I got so excited we got through consideration, I wanted to jump over council member reports, but tonight, I really want to hear from the council, and we'll start with their reports, and I'll start to my right, Councilmember Sandoval.
All right, well, first I want to wish Everett Alvarez Eagles congratulations, as they are the Northern Californian champions, so congratulations to them. I had an opportunity to visit Alvarez High School for their mock interviews for juniors and seniors, and there is some great young people out there with some great hopes and aspirations. I want to give big props to Ms. Kay and Mr. Bryan, who is a career counselor who did an amazing job setting up those mock interviews. There is a second round of those, and Bryan has asked me to invite the entire council and mayor and our city staff, they had different interviewers from different sectors, mostly in education, so I think there's a good opportunity to maybe share about why they should come work for the city of Salinas. There is a food truck night coming up at the train station this Saturday from 1:00 to 9:00, food, drinks, games, and it's free, so I encourage the community to go out there. I attended the Tamsi meeting, as well as the Rail Policy Committee meeting, we talked about the possibilities of trains coming to Salinas. Also, at Hartnell College this Saturday, there's gonna be a STEM family science day, so go check that out, it's got a lot of interesting activities, scientific demonstration, food vendors, reptiles, and MCOE will have a fab lab, as well as music. Finally, I want to say to my wife, who is the mother of our four kids and the love of my life, happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Thank you. Well, Mary, you were talking about a team, I'm just glad Coach Heidi's on our team, so thank you. You know what, I want to, I attended the Beranda Road Community Meeting, I want to say thank you to Ms. Sophia Roman, her staff, man, such an awesome facilitator. She did a great job facilitating that meeting, it wasn't, meetings are never easy, but she did a great job. I want to acknowledge also Acting Assistant Police Chief Luis Bravo and all his police department, along with Chief Acosta, 23 youth cadets recognition ceremony. My God, can you imagine out of 23 of those youth cadets, how many of them are gonna be Salinas police officers? Congratulations on that. I was also on the Monterey-Salinas Transit Board Meeting yesterday, we are working on the SURF project, it's pretty exciting, hopefully we'll hear some good things, and I want to encourage my colleagues, if you guys ever want to baby cruise on an MST bus, just let me know, I'm your boy. I went to go visit the firefighters at Station 2, they're excited about their job, looking forward to a new fire station out there in District 5. Senior Center, thank you to Kristen Lundquist and her staff, the seniors are at the breadbox, they're having a great time, it's a temporary situation, because we had a little bit of problem at the Firehouse Recreation Center, but thank you for taking care of our seniors, Ms. Lundquist. Also, Mr. Mendez, Frank Saunders, a longtime property owner here and a good community member, he came and talked about the vandalism that's going in front of his building, I want to encourage the police department, I know we're busy, but you know this lady, if she's putting out fires out there, she can cause some damage, so we gotta address that, so hopefully we can do something, and listening to Mr. Frank Saunders. Also, we heard from Gene Robertson Park, the maintenance, Ms. Lundquist and Mr. Jacobs, as we know, because Cluster Park is gonna be worked on, the National Little League and American Little League are using Gene Robertson Park here, shortly they're having their Friday ceremony this coming Friday, and if we can just take care of their maintenance, I would appreciate that. And also, again, I want to reiterate, Saturday, there's something great, Commissioner Orlando Osorio is doing an awesome event over at the train station with food trucks, and I know Pal is gonna be there, they're auctioning this beautiful car, becoming support pal, and maybe you'll be the winner of this nice car. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Jose?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start off by making an appointment, the appointment of Mr. Salvador Muñoz to the Historic Resources Board. Mr. Muñoz has served the city of Salinas for a number of years on the Historic Resources Board and other committees, I personally know him from both having served on the General Plan Update Steering Committee, so really excited to have him serve District 1 residents on that board. Also, I had the opportunity to attend the International Women's Day Celebration hosted by the Salinas Union High School District over at Alaso High School last Friday, which was celebrated in honor of longtime Alaso High School Councilor, Ms. Pam Bernhardt. The, there were a number of speakers that really touched on the impact that Ms. Bernhardt had in the lives of not only students, but also her colleagues, the extended family. had in the lives of not only students, but also her colleagues, the extended families of students, and just overall the community over in Salinas on getting children on trajectories to go and to colleges, and, you know, aspire to greater things, and whatever the realities they were facing. Also, had an opportunity to meet with a number of community members, ranging from Acosta Plaza neighbors and neighbors alongside Natividad Creek Park, addressing a lot of concerns around public safety and homeless encampments, and what our plan is to address those issues, particularly in the creek. Also, had the chance to join Supervisor Alejos' team over in Pajaro, distributing red cards and flyers for the upcoming Immigration and Rights Forum, which was on the same day that we had our Bronda Road Expansion Project Meeting. So I also attended that meeting, which had a number of great participation from the public. A lot of the concerns were related around public safety and, you know, the safety of the children and crossing over to McKinnon, and really addressing key times of traffic and traffic flow in that area. So really looking forward to seeing that project follow through. That's Phase 1. The Bronda Road Expansion Project doesn't reach District 1 until Phase 3, so whenever that comes around, I look forward to, you know, engaging people more so in my district and educating them about, you know, what those impacts are going to be in our area. Also, had the chance to attend my Central Coast Community Energy, otherwise known as 3CE, Board Member Orientation, and will also be serving on the Emergency Risk Management Committee, which is a very interesting topic, considering that we just had a battery plant fire over in Moss Landing. So we'll be making sure that we, you know, take these types of issues very seriously and create policies that protect the communities that we're serving, particularly around energy delivery and generation. Lastly, also had the opportunity to join a few of my colleagues on the dais at the Police Cadet Recognition Ceremony. Aside from the cadets, a number of staff and community members were also recognized, you know, doing great work, both supporting the operations of the cadet program, as well as, you know, making sure that they have community partnerships and just overall function of the program. I also joined the Pink Shirt Day Celebration over at Northridge Mall. There, I was over there with my role as Board Member for Salinas Valley Pride, but there were, you know, it was a great celebration, put on by a number of community partners, just sharing different resources. And we distributed flyers about the upcoming Trans Day Visibility Event on Sunday, March 30th, from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. over at Central Park. It's going to be a painting event. It's going to be free, open to the community, if you guys would like to join us. And lastly, would just like to close off, also saying happy birthday to my mom, my dad, and my sister, who had back-to-back birthdays last week, which was a fun time. Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, Margaret?
Okay, well, for people that say there's nothing to do in Salinas, there's plenty to do, because we've all been very, very busy. Okay, I'll just hit a couple highlights. So Harmony at Home had a very vested role in the anti-bullying, wear pink night a couple Fridays ago at Northridge Mall. It was very well-attended, very exciting. Glad to be part of that, and hopefully it will continue to grow over time. I want to thank Whitney and staff for setting me up with my first pothole adventure this morning. I met with Marcus over on Ambrose Drive and got to see how they do some of their different types of pothole filling, and this was just one of them, which is in good weather. And he explained how they do things in the rain and everything. It was very educational. Mayor Donahue joined me for a few minutes as well, so that was great. He lives on that street, so that was really interesting, and I hope that we'll get a presentation from them in the future, because I think they're really doing a great job. There were only, you know, they're a crew of seven or eight people, and they're working really, really hard to make sure our streets look good. So thank you for that opportunity. I attended the youth cadet program as well on that Friday night. What was really great is that out of the 21 cadets, 11 of them were women, so I was like, yes, that's so awesome, to have women coming into those roles. So I was really excited to see that. Today, I did a present... I listened to a presentation by Tamsi at the Welcome Center, and talking about Caltrain coming in 2028, which seems like a lifetime away, but it is happening. I'm optimistic. They keep saying it's two years, it's two years, it's two years, but I think we're making really good progress, and I'm really optimistic it's going to be making its way to Salinas here pretty soon. So that's exciting. And then, been working with SCCIA, which is kind of the downtown improvement district, and just understanding their role versus the city's role, and, you know, who's in what lane, and seeing how we can support them in the work that they're doing to keep our downtown clean and vibrant. And then just addressing a lot of concerns about the rental registry. A lot of people got the letter, and they're not happy about it, and they want answers, and so I'm trying to understand that process and where the money's going, so I can address their concerns, as well as those that want their sidewalks and trees and everything taken care of. So it's been a busy couple of weeks. Thank you for all the staff reports tonight. You guys are doing a great job. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Marcus. Gloria?
Okay, I'm going to start first with the Chinese luncheon that I attended. Mayor, you attended that luncheon too, so, yeah. So that was one. And then, I also attended the Cadet Recognition Ceremony from the Salinas Police Department. There was 23 of them, 23 cadets, yeah. You add it wrong, 23. Add it... 23. 23. It's right here. 23. So anyways...
So there was nine women.
Yeah. Congratulations to the police.
No, 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 50%.
Mary Ann, make sure you tune in again at 2:00 a.m.
What a great job, what a great job...
CCTV.
The police department did, and I'm glad that we were present, the majority of us. But I also want, with that, I also want to give kudos to our police department and Commander Bravo, that we've been doing a lot of drug busts, haven't we? Taking drugs off our streets, so I commend all of the police department for that. So thank you. And then, also, you received a recognition, right? The Violence...
Violence Suppression Task.
Yes, the Violence Suppression Unit, right? So anyways, I think we're going to be hearing more about that, so I'll let that go. And then, the other event that I attended was also the Women's International, giving recognition to Pam Bernhardt. I really want to thank Rachel Torres, who has been putting the International Women's Event for our community for many years, over at least 15 years that I can remember. A very well-attended event, and kudos to Rachel. And I want to thank Councilmember Barajas, because he also attended, and we were able to give the recognition together. So again, to that. And then, what else? Let's see, let me look at my notes. I also went and walked around the Rossi Rico Park with one of my residents, and maintenance. In all that park, we took a video and showed all the cracks. A lot of people walked that park, and I hope that we can do something soon, because it's very dangerous. If you're walking, and I saw somebody run, and I said, "Oh, my goodness, I hope he doesn't get his foot caught in one of those cracks." So that's an issue. Also, they removed a sign from that park. You know how I had two signs, and where it says, "Lor... I mean, Rossi Rico Park"? Someone removed it. You could tell that a car's been going up the park. You could see the impressions of the tires. And I was like, "Who would do that?". But people do bad things, okay? And so I hope that somebody can report that, if they see that person that's going up the park, or cameras out there. But I'll be working closely with the residents, because that's really concerning. The other one was, okay, the park, Chinese luncheon. There was a car show that was put on by the Low Rider Magazine that was very well-attended, so that's another activity that we had this weekend. Also, we're having a neighborhood meeting for the residents of Casa de Maderas. It's not a community meeting, Saturday, if it doesn't rain. So we're going to have that neighborhood meeting. And I would like a future agenda item, a couple of them, because I haven't... I need to know what's going on with the parks, the master plan. I think some of us up here are new, and some of us were here, but I need to know about the master plan for the parks, Christian. Also, the vendor ordinance. There's a lot of complaints right now from the businesses about illegal vendors, and I don't know what else is going on with that ordinance, so I'd like to see it. I'd like a presentation on what is... What does the ordinance say that we're seeing these vendors, yeah, and even from out of town, that are doing illegal vending? So if we could have that put on, so that we can get educated on that? And there was something else, I know. Well, anyways, Rossi Rico, the grass, luncheon, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Gloria. Aurelio?
Yes, so on Saturday, March 1st, had the opportunity to attend the El Gavilan Library five-year anniversary celebration. It was a really great event. I think being there, it's what we want to see and how we want to see our libraries run. I mean, it was full. The parking lot was full. Bluey was in the house. The kids really loved them. The food, the entertainment, the activities going on for the kids, inside and outside. I mean, this is really how we want to see our city facilities used, so I want to give kudos to all of our library staff. Some of them I've had the opportunity to meet, because I do frequently attend El Gavilan Library with my two kids, and they love going there and checking out their books. And it was a really, really, really great event. Also, I attended was our own, you know, Mayor Donahue and Councilmember DeLaRosa. Great seeing you there. And also, just wanted to share, on Thursday, March 6th, attended the Bronda Road Construction Relief Project Meeting, also with our Mayor Donahue and Councilmembers, Barajas, DeLaRosa, and Barrera. And so just want to continue to plug, you know, those residents that continue to use and commute on Bronda Road, I'm certainly open to receiving feedback after that meeting in terms of how you feel about Bronda Road. I'm continuing to do my own research on it. I know that we have several other roundabouts planned and in the works, and I know that I've still yet to find someone that loves roundabouts, so I think I'm going to put that out there. I think what I found is, most people have their hesitations and frustrations and resistance to roundabouts, and so I'm open to that. Also, would also like to see, it was mentioned earlier, future agenda item, the food vendor trucks. You know, one of my... One of my understanding is that there are, you know, could be one or a group from outside the City of Salinas coming into Salinas. And so as far as like the permitting process and how that works, just would like to know so I can better answer some of those questions. I know that the county has begun some enforcements, right? And so that may be on our county or within our county limits, but in terms of the City of Salinas, a presentation or update would be insightful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Margaret, you wanted to throw in one more.
I forgot something really important. So far, Chief Sam in the back. I wanted to let you know that I had an invitation to have dinner with the Engine 1 Crew at the Sherwood Hall location. Absolutely amazing group of young men. I was so impressed. They asked a lot of questions about me, got to know me a little bit better. I asked a lot of questions about them, and then they showed me every single piece of equipment on the truck, and we went out to a medical response, and it was just a very exciting evening. So thank you for that opportunity. It was fantastic.
Okay, thank you for that. Yes?
I'd like to say something. Congratulations, Chief, and your staff. The cadet program started again. You're recruiting. So everybody listening, you have kids, sign them up for the fire department, the cadet program, also like our police.
All right, very good. All right. I hung out with a lot of my colleagues over the last couple of weeks, and you've already heard the terrific things they've been up to. Councilmember Sandoval, you're right to acknowledge the Alvarez Eagles, and we hope to acknowledge them when City of Champions. I've been talking to the principals, so that was a very impressive victory on their part, and so I'm glad you called that out. I will just close with, I had the opportunity, along with Congresswoman Lofgren, Senator Laird, and the DA, to address the Salinas Valley Chamber and their legislative breakfast. And I will just give you the highlight of what I said. I'm obsessed with infrastructure, and, Mary Ann, I don't wake up at 2:00 at night and watch Channel 25 and the most popular council meeting of all. I wake up obsessed with, "How are we going to pay for this? How are we going to pay for this stuff?". So this infrastructure issue is really top of mind, and I think tonight was an important meeting for the community to really begin to lay the groundwork, that we're going to have to have some very serious conversations with the community. So my obsession with infrastructure will go well beyond this meeting, and I'm sure now will plague the rest of my colleagues, what they're going to be thinking about it too. So with that, I think we can go ahead and adjourn, and if you're up to it, let's come back April 8.
Mayor, can I remind everybody, this is...
It's adjourned, so now it's a free-for-all, Mary Ann. You can do whatever you want.